Kieran, James, we were just considering moving the cannabis report up.
That's fine, we don't have to help you.
Okay. Ms. Orton, would you mind doing the cannabis, starting the cannabis report if the health unit shows fine, if not, we'll just proceed?
As council is aware, on October 17th, 2018, it became legal in Canada to possess up to 30 grams of legal cannabis in public and share the same, to buy dried or fresh cannabis and cannabis oil from a provincially licensed retailer, grow up to four cannabis plants per resident for personal use, and make cannabis products. The federal government's legalization regime was designed to achieve a number of objectives, some of them being to protect young Canadians by keeping marijuana out of the hands of children and youth, to keep the profits out of the hands of criminals, reduce the burdens on police and the justice system, protect public health and safety by strengthening laws that deter and punish more serious marijuana offenses like operating a motor vehicle while under the influence, to establish a public education regime, establish and enforce a system of strict production, distribution, and sales, and to continue to provide access to quality-controlled marijuana for medical purposes. Regulation of the retail sale of recreational cannabis is governed by the province through the Cannabis Control Act, the purposes of which are to regulate the sale, distribution, purchase, possession, and cultivation of cannabis in order to protect public health and safety, protect youth, ensure the sale of cannabis in accordance with provincial law, to deter illicit activities through appropriate enforcement and sanctions, and to provide for approved youth education or prevention programs. The Ontario Cannabis Retail Store will operate the sole legal online store for recreational cannabis in Ontario, and will become the provincial wholesaler of cannabis for private retail stores. The Cannabis License Act came into force on November 16th, 2018, and this legislation provides the regime to license and regulate private cannabis retailers, and authorizes the AGCO to license the same. It was initially indicated that applications to establish and operate these stores were to be submitted after December 17th, and that licensed stores would be able to open on April 1st, 2019. However, just last week, on December 13th, the province announced changes to the process. Pursuant to a new regulation, the AGCO through a lottery system will determine eligibility for retail store authorizations. Interested parties are required to submit an expression of interest online from January 7th to 9th, and there will be a draw conducted on January 11th. Under this new regulation, there will be a maximum of seven stores authorized in the western region of Ontario, and a maximum of only 25 authorizations approved in all of Ontario. There's a further limitation during this period that no store authorizations will be issued to a person who already has a retail store authorization to a licensed marijuana producer, or to, within a municipality with a population of less than 50,000 people. This limitation is in place until at least December 13th, 2019. And this was, the province indicated, as a result of the limited availability of cannabis within all of Canada. The Cannabis License Act includes the further provision that a municipality may, by resolution passed no later than January 22nd, 2019, prohibit cannabis retail stores from being located within the municipality. That prohibition can be lifted, however, if it is not in place by January 22nd, 2019, it may not be subsequently implemented. So the purpose, of course, of this report is to provide council with information to make a decision as to whether to prohibit cannabis retail stores from being located in Leamington. Pursuant to the Cannabis License Act, in order to open a retail store and sell recreational cannabis, there are two licenses and an authorization required from the AGCO. The first license is a retail operator license, and on page four of the report, you can see who would not be eligible for a retail operator license. If the applicant is under 19, if they have been convicted or charged with offenses under the Provincial Cannabis Control Act or License Act, and the Federal Cannabis Act, if the applicant has connections with a criminal organization, or has made false statements on its application, if the applicant is in default of filing provincial or federal tax returns, if the application is made by a corporation and more than 9.9% of the corporation is owned by a licensed producer, or if the applicant will not operate the business with integrity, honesty, or in the public interest. The next is the retail store authorization, and there are again eligibility requirements. The applicant is not eligible for such an authorization if the applicant does not have a retail operator license. And the most interesting one, and the one that council would be most interested in also, is if it is not in the public interest based on the needs and wishes of the people who live in the municipality where the proposed store would be located, and I'll speak to that further in a moment. If a license has been issued under the Federal Cannabis Act to produce cannabis for commercial purposes, and the holder of that license applies for a retail store authorization, the retail store must be located on or within the site set out in that license. That license holder and its affiliates may not have more than one retail store. And most importantly, a cannabis retail store cannot be located near a school or a private school if the proposed retail store is less than 150 meters away from the property line of the school or private school. There must be a separation between the sale of cannabis and other businesses within the retail store. It must be enclosed by walls separating it from the other commercial establishment or activity. It cannot include an outdoor area, and it cannot be entered or passed through in order to access any other commercial establishment. The retail store must have a retail manager, and that manager must have a license unless that is one and the same as the retail store operator. Again, there are eligibility requirements similar to the retail operator. The applicant must be over 19, must act in compliance with the law, and with integrity, honesty, or in the public interest. There are rules within the Cannabis License Act to operate the store. The retail operator must begin selling cannabis within one year of obtaining the authorization. There's only permissible opening hours between 9:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The official cannabis retail seal must be displayed, as well as the retail store authorization. The store must keep records of specified information and activities, and have measures in place to reduce the risk that the cannabis will be redirected to the illegal market or activities. There must be training for all licensed managers and employees, and the operator must request identification of anyone who looks under 25 years old. Of course, the retail operator must sell, must not sell to anyone who is under 19 years old. To anyone who is intoxicated, cannot sell more than 30 grams of dried cannabis. Once licensed retail stores begin operating, the AGCO will only enforce the regulations related to licensed stores. The AGCO will not enforce against any illegal retail store selling cannabis without a license, indicating that enforcement will continue to be the responsibility of local law enforcement, similar to the enforcement of liquor license laws. I included the application fees within this report just to identify the cost for a retail operator license and retail store authorization, which combined for the initial two-year term are $10,000. The Smoke Free Ontario Act legislates where cannabis may be smoked or vaped. The rules I've included at Appendix Number Two to the report. You will note that municipalities may also pass bylaws to further prohibit the smoking or vaping of cannabis in certain spaces, but it is important to note that a municipality does not have the authority to prohibit smoking on a highway which includes a sidewalk. And we will be providing council with a further report regarding recommendations for further bylaws to limit smoking in the municipality. Just of note, and something that the mayor of Windsor I know had raised concerns about, that it could be, the potential could be that persons do smoke cannabis on sidewalks, which could not be prohibited, so there is the potential for smoking around cannabis retail stores. Potential economic development regarding cannabis retail stores, and I asked James to contribute to this report, as you'll note, and he has indicated from an economic development perspective, retail cannabis stores represent a potential source of jobs in customer traffic within Leamington's commercial areas. Economic impact analysis estimates that each job within the retail cannabis sector would support up to three jobs within the broader economy. It is anticipated that retail cannabis would be a tourism driver in border regions such as Essex County. An established retail cannabis sector would assist those, with those efforts, to develop cannabis production, attracting associated industries such as research and development. So the retail sector would assist those efforts by demonstrating the municipality's commitment to that growing economy. But there is also the potential impact upon the illegal market. So one of the rationales for legalization was the market for recreational cannabis would shift over time from the illegal market to the legal market, which would reduce the revenues available to organize crime. While a decision not to opt out of having cannabis retailers within Leamington will not immediately eliminate the cannabis traffickers, over time, recreational cannabis users are likely to substitute legal for illegal cannabis when they purchase. It's anticipated that this substitution could have a positive effect in the reduction of illegal drug trafficking by making trafficking less profitable and reducing trafficking in other illegal drugs. Cannabis users would be less likely to have contact with illegal drug traffickers who might offer to sell more dangerous substances. If Leamington were to choose to opt out of the cannabis retailer system, some people might travel to other communities to buy cannabis or order it online. However, many would continue to purchase from their current dealers. The potential is with the possession of less than 30 grams of cannabis now being legal, the illegal trafficking in cannabis could increase if there was not a convenient local supply available from an authorized retailer. As I indicated previously, an applicant is not eligible for a retail store authorization if it is not in the public interest based on the needs and wishes of the people who live in the municipality where the proposed store would be located. In order to assess the wishes of the people who live in these municipalities, the AGCO is required to provide notice of retail store authorization applications by posting the proposed site, as well as the publication of the notice on the customer service portal, IAGCO. Notice is not provided directly to the municipalities, like in the case of a Part One cannabis producer. Submissions as to whether it's in the best interest of the municipality must relate to whether the issuance of the authorization is in the public interest, having regard to the needs and wishes of the residents, and that has been defined as being protecting public health and safety, protecting youth, and restricting access to cannabis, preventing illicit activities in relation to cannabis. It does not appear from their website that the AGCO will require as part of an application for a retail store, evidence that the proposed cannabis retail store is located in an appropriate zone pursuant to local zoning bylaws. Therefore, it would be prudent for the municipality to review notices and make submissions relevant to matters of public interest, including comment on as to the local zoning bylaw application. I did prepare a draft policy, which is attached as Appendix Three, to provide some guidance. I did want to note, however, that it is not the role of the municipality to seek feedback directly from residents, or to be responsible to gather information from residents for submission to the AGCO because of that public portal availability. For this reason, the policy relates only to municipal facilities. So I did include the policy for your reference, but in summary, the policy indicates it is not in the public interest for a cannabis retail store to be located closer than 200 meters from the property line of municipal facilities, where persons under the age of 18 years may comprise the majority of persons present or intended to be present, being the Leamington Kinsman Recreation Complex, all sports fields, and parks with play equipment, and in any zone that is not designated for commercial use unless the proposed retail store is to be located within the site set out at a license issued under the Cannabis Act to produce cannabis for commercial purposes. So that is essentially on-site of the producer. The Cannabis License Act indicates that a municipality does not have the authority to pass a bylaw that would provide for a system of licenses relating to the sale of cannabis, relating to the holding of a license or authorization under the Cannabis License Act or cannabis retail stores. So really, the municipality can't provide a business licensing bylaw that would relate specifically to cannabis retail. Also, this section prohibits the passing of a zoning bylaw distinguishing the use of land for this purpose. So the position of the Windsor Essex County Board of Health is also attached as an appendix to this report. It's encouraging all municipalities to opt out of the cannabis retail model as proposed by the province, and I know that the Board of Health has requested delegation status here this evening, but we're presenting in Kingsville, so they may attend later. In the event that council wishes to prohibit cannabis retail stores, it must pass a resolution to this effect, as I indicated, and within three business days of the passing of the resolution, that notice of the same must be provided to the AGCO no later than January 22nd, 2019. And AGCO does maintain a list right on its website of the municipalities that have opted in or opted out. The provincial government has indicated it will provide $40 million to municipalities over two years to help local governments keep their communities safe. The Ontario Cannabis Legalization Implementation Fund will be distributed to lower and upper-tier municipalities on a 50/50 basis. The first payment would be delivered in January, made to all municipalities on per household distribution basis, so that at least $5,000 is provided to each municipality. Based upon the distribution model and the number of households in Leamington, the municipality in the county would each receive a payment of $13,390. Province indicated that its second payment would be distributed after January 22nd. If a municipality has decided to prohibit cannabis retail stores, that municipality would receive a further $5,000 payment. If it has decided to opt in to cannabis retail, it would receive a similar payment to the pre-January payment. And if the municipality prohibits cannabis retail by January 22nd and then opts back in, the municipality would not be eligible for any additional funding. Municipalities must use this funding to address the costs that directly relate to the legalization of recreational cannabis, and the province has provided some examples, for increased enforcement, increased response to public inquiries, paramedic services, fire services, and bylaw and policy development. If council does not prohibit cannabis retail stores within the municipality and directs administration to provide submissions in connection with each application for a retail store authorization, it is anticipated that the staff time associated with that work would be between one to two hours for each application, in addition to daily monitoring of the IAGCO portal for notices of an application. So the recommendation is that council choose either of the following options. Number one, that cannabis retail stores be prohibited from being located in the municipality, and that is the opt-out approach. Or option two, that cannabis retail stores not be prohibited from being located in the municipality. In the event that council chooses option two, which is not to opt out, that council then approve policy P09, cannabis retail stores, matters of public interest, and direct administration to apply the policy when making submissions to the AGCO in connection with applications for retail store authorizations.
Mr. Newfelt, you'd like to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to recognize and appreciate the work that Ruth has done on this report, given that the regulations continue to change even right up until Friday night, I think, is when I finally found the new regulations. And I want to draw your, council's attention to something, a couple of things Ruth mentioned, but something that she didn't. Specifically, what she did mention that I want to highlight is that only 25 retail stores are going to be authorized across Ontario, but in particular, as it affects Leamington, no cannabis retail store would be allowed in a municipality with a population of less than 50,000. So this is something new that states that now Leamington isn't even eligible for a retail store at this time. And so then we say, well, what do you mean by "at this time"? And I think as importantly, I wanted to note that in the regulations at 8.3, it talks about revoking these pieces of regulation, and they'll be revoked on December 13th, 2019. So for one year, the municipality of Leamington is not even eligible to have a retail store in its municipality. Now, I know there's been an awful lot of talking about, do we opt in and do we opt out, and all of the reasons to opt in and opt out. The reason I'm bringing this to council's attention is that there was some urgency around trying to make this decision, and perhaps there still is, but I'm suggesting that the impact of opting one way or the other has changed on Friday. Now, Ms. Orton also referenced the extra payments that would be made to municipalities that opt in, or in conversely, those that opt out would only receive a portion of the second payment. That is something that we don't, I don't think we have clarification on whether that applies even to municipalities that are not eligible. In other words, if the municipality of Leamington were to opt out tonight, in part because it doesn't have any impact right now with respect to whether or not a retail store can open, there may still be the financial impact of not receiving that second component. It seems somewhat unfair to me that a municipality that isn't eligible to take part in the opting in would be financially punished for not opting in. However, logic may not win out in that circumstance, but I wanted council to be aware of those two things. One, that opting in or opting out has a different impact tonight than it did just a week ago, and if we opt out, we do potentially jeopardize the second partial payment, extra payment that is being made, and I think it's in the amount of $8,000, just so that you have a financial amount in your mind.
Thank you, Mr. Newfelt. Does council want to speak or make comments before we go to the delegations? Counselor Jacobs, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In light of this new information with a population of 50,000 or less, do we have to make a decision then whether to even opt in or opt out? I mean, can't we not just leave this for one year and come back and make a decision at that time? Because right now, the way the rules, the regulations are changing almost hourly, let alone daily, or however they want to do it, and no one is really sure what's taking place, what benefit is us to do either way? Maybe you could explain that to me?
I probably can't go too far into all of the explanation, except to say this, that by not making a decision, you are making a decision, because your resolution is actually to opt out, not to opt in. So if you don't notify the provincial government that you're opting out by January 22nd, you will automatically, automatically the municipality will be determined to be opting in. So a decision does need to be made before January 22nd.
So if we opt in or opt out, if we opt in, there's no opting out?
Correct.
So we have to make a decision tonight, or can we wait for a year to make that decision? Or we have to wait till January 22nd, is what you're saying, basically, or before?
I would suggest that you would want to make the decision tonight to opt in or out, opt out, but as you have noted, that if you opt in at this point, there's no opting out later, but if you opt out now, you can opt in later. So I leave that, I'm trying not to lead council one way or the other, but to just explain the legal framework in which you're making your decisions.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just, so theoretically, then, we can say, okay, we're going to opt out, we're going to address it again in one year time period after we become eligible, if we're eligible at that particular point in time with the 50,000 population designation. Is that correct? Am I on the right track?
Yes, in fact, you could opt out now and opt in again in a month if you wanted to, or six weeks. I don't think there's any timeframe around that, but I think, if I understand what you're suggesting, that you could opt out now, and the issue of opting in would only become significant when the legislation changes enough that a municipality of our size is no longer prohibited from having a retail store. That sounds like right now, at least under these regulations, that the restriction of the 50,000 population will be removed on December 13th of 2019, which then would allow for people within the municipality of Leamington who want to have a retail store would be able to apply. Now, that's if all of these regulations remain the same, which we don't know that that's going to happen either. We've seen shifting sands here on a fairly regular basis, but if, all things being equal, if these regulations hold true, the municipality of Leamington opting out now with an eye to reconsidering their position when the municipality is eligible to have a retail store... store, that would be, as it would seem right now, one year from now.
And to me, I think this would give us a little bit of breathing room, because I know in discussions with some of my fellow councillors, that, as you said, Mr. Newfelt, rules and regulations are changing so rapidly, no one really has a handle on anything that's really concrete at this point, particular point in time. So maybe this would give us some breathing room with this new 50,000 designation. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Verbeke?
Thank you, worthy mayor. Let's say we opt in, we don't even meet the government's requirements, so what can they, I guess my concern is too, that if we opt in, but we can't have a retail store, can somebody parachute a retail store into this facility because they have a license in Quebec or B.C.? Or do you know?
My understanding of this is that, in reading the regulations, it seems very clear to me that no license, and I'll read it. Until such time as more than 25 retail store authorizations may be issued, none of the retail store authorizations that may be issued in accordance with this subsection may be allocated in respect of a cannabis retail store that would be located in a municipality with a population of less than 50,000. So on that reading, I would say a license, a retail license for a different location does not apply in a municipality that's less than 50,000.
Wonderful, Mayor, thanks. Everybody else is talking about this tonight too, and everybody else is smaller than 50, so I guess we won't be getting anything in Essex County by the looks of it, but Toronto could get 20?
Well, again, the regulations lay that out, that a maximum of five retail store authorizations is allocated for cannabis retail stores located in the Toronto region. So the legislation is specific about how many are within which region.
Anyone further on council? Counselor Thiessen?
I think in this case, the province actually did us a favor, potentially. I think this gives us a breathing room, it gives us a chance. Number one, it gives the Ontario government a chance to actually solidify some rules, so that we actually know what decision we're making. Up until this point, we haven't been able to make a decision, well, I have, but I don't think as a town, we can't make a decision which way to even go with this, based on the fact that we don't know who's going to run the store, we have no say over who can run the store, we can't, we have no say over how many stores there will be, we don't have any say over where this store could possibly go, as far as owning and different things. So I think in this case, they may have done us a favor. We may be giving up $8,000. In this case, I'm okay with that. I would like us to opt out at this time and wait until there are more regulations that are solidified, and maybe it gives us time to lobby the government to get the regulations the way we would like to see them.
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you, and I echo the comments made by Counselor Thiessen. We've all labored over this for the last week or two. The changing sands, as Peter referred to, is, you know, with the latest legislative changes, you know, by the AGCO, right now, there is no limit as to whether or not they can be put in across a daycare center, or from a rehabilitation center, it can be across the street from anywhere. And I think we need to get those things in place, and as Counselor Thiessen alluded to, this time period may allow us to, may allow them to get this in order, and I think that's why you're seeing other municipalities in our area opting out as well.
Counselor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, your worship. I too am struggling with this one, but especially with this new rule that's been placed on us here with the population. I'd still like to hear from our delegates that have come here tonight, this would help us make a, you know, a sounder decision going forward here after that. I do have one question in regards to information that was in the report, though, that it was for Schedule A, if you don't mind, for all the places that are deemed, how was it put? Leamington facilities, where majority is made up of children. That's a good list there, but I'm wondering, why wasn't the library included in here? I would think that they meet that criteria, if any spots. Can anybody speak to that?
If it's council's wish to amend that schedule, that's certainly an opportunity to do so for the library.
With that, I would hope that council would consider that. I'm pretty familiar with how the library works, and just about any time I'm in there, it seems like there is a, you know, there's often children inside that place. So I'm hoping that council would consider that, add into that list.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I agree with sentiments of Counselor Wilkinson, and I want to hear what the delegates have to say, but I do have a question with Ruth regarding the public's wishes, and how they get to send to the AGCO their concerns about the retail store, its location, so they're up to speed on that, or they can go to the website and find that information out. So if the council here opted in on that store, and the public, say, the majority of the town writes in that they just don't want it in, would that take us back out of the running of it? Would it stop it from happening, or is it a certain criteria, the health measurements, like, we don't want it close to the school, or it's too close to that school, or there's other provisions that would change that? Is that what they're referring to? I'm not quite understanding that, and maybe better clarification would be appreciated. Thank you.
Well, what the AGCO has indicated is that notice would be placed on-site, and then on their portal. So just similar to liquor license applications, which are placed on-site, that's the public notice. So anybody who is interested would have to keep on top of checking that portal and determining if there's a location that they wish to submit comments on. What the legislation indicates is that only comments that are related to public interest would be considered. So the definition of public interest is, as I indicated in the report, so protecting public health and safety, so comments related to how public's health or safety would be impacted, based on that location, would be considered by the AGCO. Protecting youth, so again, if a daycare operator notes that a potential retail store is very close to that daycare operation, those would be comments that would be in the public interest to be submitted. And then illicit activities related to cannabis, that would be the potential for, is that cannabis going to somehow then become part of the illegal market? Is there opportunity there? And what are those opportunities? Those would be comments that would be in the public interest to be submitted, and that the AGCO would take into consideration.
So we have a list of delegates here. We have Greg Batterby from Aphria. I'm not sure if Greg is here. You are? Great, welcome. Have a seat up here, turn the mic on. If you could give the address of your business, please, Greg?
265 Talbot Street West. So I'm here representing Aphria, and on behalf of Aphria, I'd like to thank the community for its bring support over the years. Aphria is proud to be one of the largest employers in Windsor and Essex region, employing over 500 staff in Leamington, and that number continues to grow every day, and is even larger outside of the Leamington area. Further, we wish to applaud council for taking the necessary and responsible steps to fully consider both sides of the legal cannabis retail market in Leamington. We are grateful for the opportunity to provide some considerations. An opportunity with both economic and social benefits has presented itself. The key is balancing the creation of a strong cannabis ecosystem with players of all sizes, with government objectives, public safety, and consumption of quality products. Aphria products are currently being sold in private retail markets across Canada, and to this end, tonight, I would like to share three key considerations to help inform council and the larger community as you consider Leamington's potential role in the retail sector. Those considerations are, one, eliminating the black market, two, growing Leamington's cannabis ecosystem, and three, the health and wellness opportunities. So I'll start with the black market. Like members of this council and the larger community, Aphria's principal objective is to provide product that undercuts the black market and keeps cannabis out of the hands of use. That is why we are a proud sponsor of drug-free kids, entering into a charter agreement earlier this fall to help influence stigma reduction, cannabis safety and awareness and educational programs. The fact remains that demand isn't going away, and legal cannabis will be available and present via the OCS, personal growing, and from private recreational cannabis storefronts in neighboring municipalities. Aphria has always operated under the premise that, to eliminate the black market and create quality and reliable supply for residents, for Canadian residents. Currently, the legal market in Leamington, sorry, the illegal market in Leamington and Kingsville alone is estimated to be over $200 million. Allowing privately-run stores to operate in the city, or sorry, town, under a provincial licensing regime goes hand in hand with eliminating that black market, including the illegal dispensaries that are popping up throughout, not the municipality, but the county. Under federal law and provincial regulations, private cannabis retail storefronts will be required to purchase all product from the OCS to ensure safety of the product being consumed by the public, as opposed to black market dealers. Stores will be required to meet specific signage requirements, display, and security measures, as well as hours of service. Retail outlets can't be located within 150 meters from a school. I'm not telling anyone anything that we haven't already heard here. And I'd like council to consider what municipalities like Smith Falls has done. So Smith Falls has outlined areas where cannabis retail stores would be highly discouraged, including municipal libraries, registered daycare facilities, municipal playgrounds, municipal recreational facilities, social service agencies serving children and youth, addiction treatment centers, a variety of places, as Mr. Wilkinson mentioned. The town has called these sensitive use areas, and has discouraged retail locations within 150 meters of these. Aphria is committed to supporting our community and overall executive, or, and overall objectives, educating consumers on safe and responsible use of cannabis, and restricting access to youth. So to take the second point, which is growing Leamington's cannabis ecosystem. Aphria would be remiss to overlook building on what is already a healthy, vibrant cannabis ecosystem within Leamington. With Windsor, Essex positioned to be a hub, the hub of cannabis production, Leamington can't be left behind as new industries and job creators look to invest. Because, as you know, greenhouse and cannabis are, greenhouse is leading the cannabis industry in terms of production, which immediately sets Leamington apart from other communities in the county. In addition to potential, to the potential revenue stream from increased tourism, new businesses, retail stores are also a source of tax revenue, both property taxes and business Ontario is setting, as Ruth mentioned, Ontario is setting aside $10 million of municipal funding to address costs from unforeseen circumstances related to legalization of cannabis. Priority for this funding will be given to communities that have not opted out. Furthermore, if Ontario's portion of the federal excise duty on recreational cannabis over the first two years of legalization exceeds $100 million, the province will provide 50% of the surplus to municipalities that have opted in. Opting out removes Leamington from this future, future potential financial benefit. In terms of job creation, retail stores provide for more than just the retail store employment, from potential construction, in-house store designs, retail displays, graphic designs, local printing, merchandising shops, there's a halo effect in the community from allowing retail stores. Looking down the road, there are opportunities to spin off sectors and investment opportunities as the cannabis industry evolves. So last point I'd like to make is with regards to health and wellness opportunities. Finally, when it becomes, when it comes to health and wellness, there's an opportunity to help protect the public and safety by allowing adults to additional access to safe and legal cannabis within the community. Cannabis has often been deemed effective for pain, thus potentially reducing the need for opioids. Also, there's some evidence that cannabis can increase efficacy of opioids, meaning that patients can taper their doses of their prescription opiates with cannabis. Further anecdotal data from Aphria suggests that medical cannabis leads to a reduction in use of other prescription medicines, including opioids and anti-inflammatories. Illegal cannabis is not held to the same safety standard and burden, and may burden the healthcare system when toxins are introduced, or when dosages are not accurately assessed. This summarizes our key considerations. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to share what we hope will be valuable information to help council and the larger community as you determine Leamington's role in the retail sector. I'm confident that council will come to a well-informed decision that is in the best interest of Leamington and its community members. We would be pleased to provide any additional information that council may need to further make a decision.
Stay there for a minute, we'll see if there are any questions. Any questions from council? Counselor Wilkinson?
I got a few. Greg, Greg Batterby? Thank you, first of all, for coming, really appreciate it. You were the one here that I wanted to see tonight the most. When I first started reading this report, I look at Leamington as being very unique when it comes to our nation, when it comes to cannabis. We, of course, we got the powerhouse player right inside of our own town boundary. I think we need to be open-minded to this because of that situation, and so we not only have Aphria, we got Natura Naturals is another one, that's an up-and-comer. So we've got a number of, you know, what I consider heavyweight cannabis producers in town. First of all, I want to make sure I got your three points right that you had there. Eliminating black market exposure, second one was growing Leamington's cannabis ecosystem, and the third was health and wellness opportunities, correct?
Correct.
All right. Right now, with the two, I agree with two or three there. I'm worried about eliminating the black market exposure. Full disclosure, you know, I know a little bit about cannabis culture, I do, you know, I'm no Boy Scout growing up, you know, but I do know a little bit around this. Word on the street that I'm hearing is, and maybe you can, you'll probably have stats or data that will back this up, to go and purchase cannabis from black market sources, black market cannabis is cheaper still, correct?
I would say, if you look at average prices in the current retail system, it's probably slightly cheaper. I'd say about 10% at this point, but you can't, you can't purchase cheaper cannabis in the, in the current legal retail system than the average prices on the street.
Okay, all right.
But the average price in the OCS right now, if you look across all SKUs, and they categorize by premium or value... they categorize by premium or value, mainstream and premium, the average price is slightly higher at this point. But I believe that's within, within a year's time, that will continue to be compressed as more supply comes online in the market.
Okay. I'm hearing it's a little more than that, but the benefit I do see around that, though, is for safer delivery of clean marijuana, clean cannabis is going to come from a facility like yours instead of going to, I don't know, wherever you happen to go get it. You take the chance of fentanyl being in there, any other sort of poisons, toxins, whatever that can get into there, that doesn't come from a facility like yours, and that speaks to your first point.
Yeah, and we are held to, we and all licensed producers in Canada are held to a strict testing regime. I believe we test for 96 or 97 different pesticides, alpha toxins, pathogens, all microbial, so all of our product needs to pass each and every one of those criteria, whereas when they're purchasing out of the black market, there's not a single one of those tests are done, so.
Moving on. What I really wanted to know from Aphria was, what would your model look like? You know, I'm looking for a good investment, too. You know, I want to see, in my town, I want to see good investment, good storefronts, you know, experiences, maybe. You know, I'm hearing about exciting things that are being offered in towns, you know, whether it be over across seas in Amsterdam, whether it be out in Vancouver, whether it be in Colorado. There is quite a business around cannabis, you know, experiences, you know, whether it be retreats, whether it be couples, getaways, all that kind of stuff. There is big business around this that I don't think people quite consider. They just kind of consider the stigma that everybody sees with marijuana, that it's, you know, taboo. But I would like to know, what is Aphria's model going to look like if they were to open up some sort of retail store?
I don't, I don't think we've completely landed on exactly what the model looks like at this point, but we, there's been obviously a lot of ideas thrown around, none of which have made it out publicly yet, but I can say things, things like providing kind of something similar to a brewery-type experience, like an onsite retail store, things like that have all been discussed, but we haven't actually landed on any, what I would say, decisions around what our flagship retail store would look like at this point.
So, there's no drawings?
No drawings at this point.
Okay. And last thing was, you said it was Smith Falls, Ontario has got special rules and regulations set up?
Yeah, they've, they've put in basically their own bylaw of expanding on where, on the areas that are restricted from retail stores, which I think would address some of council's concerns. So, I think it's possibly a model that could be, that could be looked at or replicated.
I appreciate you telling that to us, because, you know, I think that gives us something to look into as well, the Smith Falls, Ontario. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we have a question from councillor Dunn.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So, these retail stores are just going to be for recreational marijuana only at this present time? And any of the accessories? I'm just curious, is the medical marijuana, the CBDs for the pain relief, and I'm sure you produce that on your, at your site, and you're doing more research and development for more things to be, but I'm curious, is that going to be something that in the future maybe also be sold through these sites?
So, it's a good question. We are offering almost the exact same formulations of CBD products that we offer on our medical channel in the recreational market today, and as are, as are many licensed producers. So, you're not going to see the same branding, but you, you can get almost the same CBD-based products in the recreational or retail stores today or over the OCS website as you, as you can get a few signed up as a patient and access through our medical channels. It's just, not completely the exact same formulation in terms of dosage, but nonetheless, CBD-dominant products that are very, very close.
That's very interesting, because from what I understand is that the marijuana, you take the THC, which is the portion that gets people...
The hallucinogenic, or not hallucinogenic, but yes.
That, you take that out, and it's the CBDs that are actually just the pain relief to help, so that they don't need the opioids or any, like Aspirin or any other pain relief, that's what the whole idea is, and so you're going to be offering that kind of thing as well at the retail store?
Yeah, we currently, we currently are, and we would, we would offer it in any one of the retail stores that were carrying our product lines, and they're actually doing, moving really well.
I understand that, because people are trying, it's a pain relief, that's one of the things that's changing, especially with the epidemic of people overdosing across the country. It's just, it's sad, you know, people are carrying, you know, the police have to carry pens to save people's lives because of the opioids, so, yeah, to come up with an alternative product, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so we feel the, we're terming the wellness sector is going to be, is going to make up a huge sector of the cannabis market, and the wellness sector is mainly CBD-infused products, whether they're oils, capsules, edibles, anything like that, when edibles are allowed, are going to be a large proportion of the total cannabis market, and we have a whole strategy around that, and we've already rolled out certain products to cater to that market. And I think all licensed producers will do this, will follow suit, so I think you're going to see a lot of non-THC-based products and more as time goes on in these retail stores.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I believe councillor Hammond.
Greg, if I may, in your discussions with councillor Wilkinson, a question you raised, you had said, and I thought when your report came, when you were reading your report, I thought you said in Smith Falls, they're able to make a recommendation with respect to locations of the retail stores, and that's a little different than us having a control and say about where they can and can't go. So, if you don't mind, I'm going to ship that question to our legal department. I know you've given us a list, Ruth, of places, for example, the one that councillor Wilkinson brought up was a library as well, but can we limit it right down to the point where we can say they can't, they have to be within so many meters of daycare centers and rehabilitation centers? How broad is our scope of being able to enforce where they do and where they don't go?
Our submissions are based and limited to matters of public interest. My concern with providing submissions as to our wishes about daycares and other facilities is that we don't know where all of those are. We know where our municipal facilities are, and we can make submissions and be very accurate as to, and even provide an overview, which I provided to council attached to the policy, and that was the suggestion from AMO when they suggested implementing a policy and providing very detailed information to the AGCO as to where the facilities would be that we would be recommending placement at a distance away from. So, that would be my concern. We can certainly say it is our wish that they are not located near and enumerate those facilities, but to provide any information as to where all of them are, I would be very hesitant to do that, because if you miss one, then that is on the municipality, and not putting back, putting it back on the public to also have their input into it as well.
Thank you, Ruth, and thank you, Greg.
And more, we have Paul Tieson as well.
But is it not true that currently, under the current regulations, these stores can be placed anywhere other than within 150 meters of schools? So, the way the rules currently read, they could be beside the Kinsman complex, they could be beside any one of our parks. That is, and I think what, Greg, if I'm not mistaken, you said that Smith Falls has strongly discouraged where they might go?
Yes, that's correct, and I think I used the word "bylaw" here, and I apologize.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to clarify that. So, it's not that, that we have control over where they will go, the current regulation is just not in your schools. I just want to make sure that I have that correct.
That's correct. The regulation does have that setback provision, but that's the only setback provision.
Okay, if there's no one else, then thank you very much, Mr. Butterby. We appreciate the fact that you'd come and give us that information.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So, the next person on the delegate list is Daniel Turel, representing various pastors with congregational interests in the community.
Mayor and council, thank you for opportunity to share from the people. As I was sitting here this evening and listening to previous discussions about wanting to get some development going, it was said that we need all the players, all the different departments, to give the go-ahead before we go ahead. And as I listened tonight to the statement, which I have written down, the Windsor Essex Health Unit would seem to be one of the players of our community, and they have said that they're urging, in fact, they drafted a resolution at Thursday night's meeting, October 18th, to encourage all the municipalities to opt out for now and wait before making a decision, saying that there's so many unknowns out there, and the absence of that information would lead us to better be opt-out now than opt-in, because when we opt-in, it's permanent. So, in that like-manner thinking, I think Windsor Essex Health Unit is one of the players we need to consider, because they are one of the players in our community. In addition, as been said, the laws have been changing so fast, they're not even changing daily, they're changing hourly. If we opt-in now, and they make changes that are detrimental to us, could far override the $8,000 benefit that we lose if we opt-in, and then once we've opted in and we lose, the detriment is more than $8,000, then we've really shot ourselves in the foot, and we're not even clear about it. When I listened to what was stated, the Ontario Finance Minister announced, yes, municipalities will be funded, help them with the challenges of dealing with it. But when they say for increased medic services, higher services, for increased litigation issues, and one that wasn't mentioned, they mentioned, the Finance Minister mentioned, unforeseen circumstances, those are things we don't know what may happen, this is a whole new ballpark for us to, it has benefits, and it has economic benefits, but it also has unforeseen circumstances. Before I was a pastor, I wouldn't say I was an expert, but I would say I was very familiar with recreational marijuana use, and there are a lot of enjoyments, but I've also seen the other side. If we bring a retail outlet into our town, and we may be one of the only ones around, if they're limited, we're going to have a parade of people coming in that have a need for getting cannabis fast, because right now, anyone can get it, it's legal. But what the difference would be in a retail outlet is being able to get it easier. See, 150 meters from a school, really for us in Leamington, it's 10 minutes from one end of town to the other, so even if we're able to get it 200 meters away, it's, in reality, it's really no big deal, because if you have to be 19, you're going to drive to a store anyway and not walk. The question to me, the problem to me, is it has become much easier for our youth and our children to get their hands on it when it becomes legal. It's a black-market operation right now, which means that people that are willing to cross into a black market are using it, but there's a whole number of our population that say, you know, it's illegal, it's illegal to do that, and when it becomes legal and easy, it's going to open up to me a whole nother venue of our youth and our children participating in it that we really don't want. At this point in time, from what I understand, there are communities opting out. Markham by 12 to 1 vote opted out to come see Lake Shore, Mississauga, but we don't know why they're opting out. Have we consulted with them? Have we surveyed the population? Right now, Kingsville put out a special internet survey to the people. We want to know if you're in or out, we want to do the whole people before we vote. Windsor has the same thing in place. It would be good if we surveyed our entire population before we had to make a decision. With regard to alcohol, there are guidelines, which I wasn't aware of. You're not allowed to drink alcohol in many places unless it's licensed or in your home. With cannabis, the restriction is only by cigarette smoking, which means that, as was said, right now, you can smoke it right outside of the retail outlet if there is one, on our streets with your children walking, people can be smoking in front of you while you're waiting for a bus, and you have no legal say that, please don't smoke that around my kids. And with that being said, we have to ask, even though there's an economic advantage, what is the social cost? Do they outweigh, when a young family wants to settle down, they want, they want to be out of the city, will they be attracted to Leamington? Will they want to raise their children here? If we have a retail outlet and we're one of the only ones around, and I'm, well, I still consider myself somewhat young, but with children, I'm going to have to make a consideration. Do I want to go to that town and raise my children, or I'd rather, I'll go to Kingsville, I'll go, I'll go someplace else. I want to raise my children around a place where they have the best shot of a wholesome environment without that being one of the challenges that they face. And the smoking part is regulated, but right now, the eating part and the drinking part is not regulated. Just last week, I understand correctly, two children ate cookies that were, had too much in them, and they're still in the hospital. So, potentially, if I understand correctly, since you can grow four plants in your home, it's going to end up in the school lunch, in the school lunchroom, being eaten, without regulation or guideline. So, the medical part I understand as well, but I understand it very well, because my wife lost a battle with cancer, and I know medically, anything you can do to alleviate pain would be so beneficial. But if we're talking about using a retail outlet for medical, then we need to have a doctor there, because there's so many types of dosages, types of oils, types of ways to administrate this. If we do it without that, we're practicing medicine without a license.
I need you to consider wrapping it up, Mr. Tim Burrow.
All right. I have other points, but I'll endeavor to wrap it up. Police chaplains in Chatham, Essex were just instructed by the police, who told them that vehicular fatalities will go up with this situation. In other places, it's been known to go up as well. Since most people will drive to a retail outlet, and since the Finance Minister said these extra funding will be for paramedic services, what are they saying to us? They're saying to us that there's going to be problems. We have the option of opting in or opting out. We may not have had that option, but they've given us this option. I think we need to take the option to opt out, at least right now for sure, to be prudent. The last thing I would say is, I've never done this before, I'm not a politician, we definitely pray for our town, our mayor, and our councilman all the time, but I felt compelled, because I don't want to leave, I don't want this unsaid as a heritage to my children. Do we want this on our names, that this goes on our record? This is our mark in town, that we brought retail stores in. Cannabis is legal, it's going to be forever, more or less, but is that what we want on our name, that we voted it in? I don't want it on mine, and I would hope that you can make a decision that I believe would be prudent at this time until more things are known, more things are known to opt out. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Simone, Mr. Masternardi, if you care to come up. Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Simone, Mr. Masternardi, if you care to come up. Names, addresses, so we can...
Sure, Donnie Pacheco, 212 Robson Road.
Jim Simone, 293 Seacliff Drive West.
Benji Masternardi, 301 Mercy Road 3.
Just want to say, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you. Mrs. May, welcome. New council members, welcome. We're not here for hogs, so that's a good thing. We're not hitting yet for that yet. It was brought to our attention that this meeting was going on, and as a group of concerned citizens as well, and local businessmen, and fathers of teenagers and young children. We wanted to make sure we're somewhat involved in this conversation, because it is our future. So we're looking at it both ways as well. So we did prepare a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation for you, and tried to get everybody to understand the differences on both sides of the fence. And ours, as we see, is we have an opportunity to control this. And maybe, you know, some of you haven't thought about the things maybe we have as going into this as a business, and a safe one at that. We've traveled all over the US, researching different facilities and dispensaries throughout different states that have legalized cannabis. And we've also met with politicians in Toronto. And we're actually, we'll talk a little bit about that, but we actually met with the hierarchies of Ontario to help them guide where we think this may be going. So, our whole concept here is about family, it's about our community, and it's about the safety and the legal aspect of recreational cannabis. We want to talk to you a little bit about who we are, and why we're seeking involvement, and what are the benefits, and what are the costs associated with opening one of these stores, and hopefully answer some of the questions that maybe we have, that we've been researching and reading as well, and following legislation with the Ontario government. And as we can see as of Friday, things are changing all the time. So, we'll answer some of those questions and maybe give you some insight on that as well. So who we are, obviously, we're, some of you may know us already. We're local responsible business owners in our community. Most of our businesses have been operating since some of our fathers have started business and so forth. We're parents of teenagers, young children, babies, and we care about the safety of our community. We also want an opportunity to provide a safe solution for the sale of legal cannabis. Again, many people are talking about the illicit market out there, and we want to be part of the legal market. I personally have held an AGCO liquor license for over 23 years with zero infractions. And the model is being controlled by the AGCO, if some of you don't know already. So I think that's important, that it's following some of the similarities of a liquor license. We're also, on some ends, part of the production of safe cannabis with the Health Canada LP partner. And we also understand the importance of properly-run business that abides by the law and regulations set forth by the AGCO, the Ontario Government, and the Federal Cannabis Act, as well as local municipality bylaws, since we all have businesses in town. So what are some of the benefits? You know, controlling the safe purchase of legal cannabis in our community, while combating the illicit market and purchases of unsafe cannabis. I think everybody's pretty much heard tons of stories about what some of this cannabis on the street is being laced with, how some kids have been affected, so forth and so forth. I don't think we need to comment on the bad aspect of it. I think we need to comment on getting it off the streets and keeping it safe. Controlling minors from being able to purchase legal cannabis. In the laws, it states that anybody entering a cannabis store must be of 19 years of age and must be IDed at the door. They cannot go into the store. It's not like your liquor store where you can walk in with your child and they can walk around and see product and whatever. This is completely against the laws. So I'm pretty confident that that's an awesome part of keeping kids out of it. Well-paying jobs in our community could be added. A clean, safe and responsible store operation, similar to an LCBO look and feel. As you can see on the first few slides that we're showing there, those are actual pictures of stores that we went and saw throughout the US. They look like Apple stores. We're not looking, they're not your pot store with the banners and everything hanging on the sides of the walls. That's not what today's recreational cannabis user is looking for. They're looking for something safe, a great place to do business, and not an illegal type environment. So, and we've seen that across many, many dispensaries we went and checked out. Capitalizing on tourism from other neighboring communities that have opted out. That's a huge point, and I know it was brought up today that the municipality of Leamington does not have the population for some of the first 25 licenses. And I agree, laws are changing all the time, though. So, maybe today, they give out the seven licenses in our areas and we don't get one. But if supply and demand, or supply comes online, I will tell you through some experiences that Benji had up at Toronto at the parliament, that as supply comes on, they are going to allow more and more licenses. There will be no date of December next year. This is going to come on quicker than we think as more supply comes on. The reason for the scale back is they know they didn't have supply. And Benji was involved in those conversations with our government about supply and demand and why maybe hold off on it. And that's how this law changed. We've been involved in these conversations and we agree with them. Slow down the pace of stores being open. Make sure they're safe, make sure they're running properly, and then slowly bring it on. So to us, opting out as of right now, I don't think it is an option. I think Leamington has a huge opportunity to opt in. Maybe we won't get a license. Great. But maybe we'll be in line to get one of the next ones. And we can be at the forefront of opening these and controlling them, than rather than just waiting to see what everybody else is doing. We've already discussed the seven licenses in our area, but I think it's an ability to capitalize on it and be a market leader, rather than sitting on the fence waiting to see what else happens. Some of the costs associated, I know this conversation came up with some of you as we were talking about it a couple days ago. This is not a cheap venture. This is not your local bong shop. This isn't a pop-up store that's going to happen overnight. The cost of these fees, as Ruth said earlier, it's a $6,000 fee just for the operator license, with each additional store being another $4,000. Plus $7.50 for a manager license to run the location. And that's only for a two-year term. So then you have to renew all these licenses every two years, or get the four-year option and renew them for every four. We've already done our investigation on what it takes for security cameras. The entire store from outside to the back, exits to where it's being disposed of, all has to be recorded and data-kept for over 30 days. You need to control the product and keep it secured in vaults. And you also have to have all your product in tamper-proof containers on displays. So no product will be on the shelves for people just to walk up and grab. Everything's in a tamper-proof container that needs to be secured to a counter or a table like this. And all they can do is hold up the container and smell it, but it's a secured piece of product. So, all those things cost money. So we're averaging about $75,000 in just the security aspect of a store. POS systems, your point-of-sale system, from purchasing to inventory control, to 19 and over verification IDs, to returns, to you name it. We have to control all these processes, just like we do a restaurant, let's say, and provide all the data and HST and everything else. So these things aren't cheap to buy either. So we're looking at about $35,000 in just POS systems. The build-out of approximately 1,600 to 1,800 square foot storefront, from exterior facades to interior, we're looking at about $300,000 to renovate and outfit one of these locations. And then you have inventory, which is about 150. So we're looking at about a $550,000-plus endeavor here just to open one location. One of the things that was brought up about paraphernalia earlier, you are not allowed to sell anything other than government-regulated product. So, meaning dried cannabis or oils, and/or government-regulated paraphernalia. So you just can't go and get that colorful bong that everybody's looking for. There's a specific company that deals directly with the OCS on what products can be sold in a store, and you can only purchase from them. So it's very streamlined, very basic, very simple. You're not a shelf full of bongs and everything else that goes on the side, I don't know, I don't do that stuff, so, but, pipes and whatever it may be. So, those are the only two products you can sell. The third one is a shopping bag, just so you know. Other questions and information maybe you haven't thought of? Obviously, we know it's controlled by the AGCO. All cannabis purchased through the Ontario Cannabis Store. So the Ontario Cannabis Store is who everybody has to buy from, so it won't be, you can just pick whoever LP you want, or you can buy it off the street and sell it in your store. It's all controlled by the Ontario Cannabis Store, which is also going to regulate the price. So, we'll be buying direct from that wholesaler at a certain price to sell it at whatever price the market is in our store. You're not allowed to, or I just mentioned that, not allowed to sell anything other than cannabis and government-approved paraphernalia. Only 19 and older in each cannabis store. Criminal background checks on all staff, including owners of the corporations. Smart-serve-like program for all-staff training. Must have at least 30 days of video recording on file. Proper disposable of that stock must be documented and filmed. License fees are non-refundable. So again, anybody that's just looking to throw up a pop-up store, good luck throwing $6,000 into the wind with another $4,000 first store and then not getting a license. You have to have money to get into this business. It isn't going to be a pop-up shop-type place. Anybody thinking that you're going to have 10 in a little town of Leamington, I think you're crazy. This is maybe a one-store per bigger-size demographic than I think anybody realizes. So I hope we answered some questions, brought a different light to this. I know with that 50,000 person, the municipality rule, it's kind of discouraging and it's easy to say to opt out. But at the end of the day, what if they opened the doors a little faster and April 1st comes around and they issue another 10 licenses? And you got guys like us waiting at the doorstep going, we want to make our community safer and a better place and do it right. We want to be first in line. We want to be part of this. And we want you guys to have input. I think you all know who we are. We're business guys. We want it done right. I got a two-year-old daughter. Jimmy's got four teenagers, from 16 to 20. You know what? We don't want our kids going to the street. We want to make sure they're taken care of safely. So I hope that you guys have some questions for us, because we want to help you make the right decision. So I hope you see it from our side.
Great, thanks, Donnie. Council, questions? Did you want to speak, Benji? Sorry.
No, but I'll gladly answer any questions.
Okay, great. So we'll start with Paul Teason, please.
Thanks for your presentation, Donnie. And I don't dispute that if you're involved in it, it's going to be done right. And that's, if there is going to be a store in town, it has to be done on this level. My concern is, or part of my concern is that, can you guarantee me that you're going to be the guy running the store? I want to make sure that if this does come to fruition, that the guy running the store is guy living in Leamington and not an import from the other side of Toronto or Quebec. And at this time, we don't have those, we don't have the right to say that, who's going to be running it? Because if something goes wrong in the store, I want him local, because I want to hold his feet to the fire.
So let me answer that question for you. So just so you know, if you haven't read the regulations, these licenses are not transferable. Okay? So you just can't just sell the store and pawn it off to anybody afterwards. So just so everybody reads those on the regulations. So, the other part is, is you have to have a manager license operator. So even if it wasn't one of us personally, we own the company, we still have to hire, train a manager that's there and has to run, and they're in charge of the purchasing, the inventory, and everything that goes with it. So, just like I have managers in my store, just like we have managers that run other operations that these guys own, we're still the guys that control the numbers and still making sure that it's safe, right? It's not like we can go just flog it off to anybody. You can't sell these things. So, I think that's where there's a huge opportunity that people aren't seeing. This isn't something that you can just pop up and just start flogging. The government has put in some pretty awesome rules to try to get this to where it needs to be. You know what? Canada legalized it, and they want it safe. That's why they legalized it. So I think they're doing a great job. Is it all done yet? No, man. This is going to change a lot from now till two years from now, you know? Regulations are going to change and you just got to adapt with them. But like I said, I think we got a huge opportunity. I think there are some really strong points in the regulation that's going to deter some of our fears. And that's what this all is. It's fears. The fear of the unknown. Listen, it's going to take half a million bucks, just like Leovis is going to spend $3 million on a project. You know what? If you get the right people behind you, I think we can achieve something. I wouldn't be putting myself out there, nor would Benji. We don't need this. What we need it for is our community, for our kids. You know, Jimmy's got four kids, all teenagers. Listen, they're in the party world. You know, do you want your kids buying off the street? Or you want them buying something safe if they are going to be trying it? And I mean kids, meaning he's got a 21-year-old, a 19-year-old, so, legal kids, that is.
Further to that?
But just, once again, because I don't think you quite answered the question.
Yeah, for sure.
Can you guarantee me that it will be a local owner-operator in this area? Will it be, will it be, is there a chance?
Our corporation is the three of us as partners.
Right, no, I get that. Is there a chance that somebody gets the operator's license from the other side of Toronto, comes up and sets up shop?
Oh, listen, if we don't get an operator license, yeah, somebody else from Toronto might get a license and come into Leamington.
Right, and that's part of my concern, is that I want to make sure. I would like input as to who's going to be in our town. We don't have that now. We may never get that.
That's right.
But if we opt in right now, then any chance of us negotiating is out?
I hear your point. But if you opt out, then this partnership falls apart and we don't even go after a license. And then, down the road, if you do, it's some other guy that just goes, oh, Leamington's on the map, let's take it. We're willing to put our investment in now, and we're willing to get our name in at the top of the list and make those initial investments now to be at the first in line. But if you're not first in line, guess what? Somebody else is. Listen, we don't want to go to another community. I don't want to go to London. I don't want, you know, Kingsville, okay, because it's close by. But we're not looking to go open these things elsewhere. We're looking at our town.
Thank you, Paul. John Hammett.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Donnie, it was a great presentation, and one thing that come out of it, for me, were a number of questions. You've been afforded the possibility of visiting some of those other stores, and I haven't. I can't speak for anybody else here, but I bet we all haven't. I did talk to, today, to a local mayor who has visited these stores. And his explanation was, they're beautiful to look at on the inside, but less desirable on the outside. And so my question to you is, I mean, we saw your presentation and, you know, which looks great, but what did you find? What were your findings? If you're going to be honest with us, what were your findings in the surrounding area and the neighborhoods that these stores were in? First of all, where did you go? Did you go to Colorado?
In the last couple months, between myself, my brother, Donnie, we've been Colorado, Florida, Las Vegas, just a few. My brother's been several other states besides what we've been to. It's a good question. Everyone seems to be very concerned about cannabis and how it's sold. I mean, it already is sold, number one. The fellow was here earlier, mentioned that it's illegal. It's not illegal, it's legal now. And it's being sold online, so it's not like it isn't. You can buy it online. Everyone, there's still obviously a massive stigma with cannabis. And that's, you know, that's probably the biggest thing, I think, with stopping a lot of communities from opting in, is that stigma. The better, more questions, I think what more people should be asking is, how many related deaths per year are involved with cannabis? I was watching, well, three months ago, there was a senate hearing with the ATF where they were interviewing, the senate was interviewing the ATF, and it was mostly geared towards opiates. The question was, how many people passed, died in 2017 in the United States from opiate-related deaths? It was 44,000. They then asked the ATF, how many related deaths were there from alcohol? Alcohol-related deaths in the United States in 2017? It was 88,000. How many cannabis-related deaths in 2017? They said, well, none documented, but we're sure there's some. So they piped up in the senate, they're like, so, let me ask you a question. If the 44,000 and the 88,000, you think those are accurate numbers? And everybody was in agreement that they were, those were documented, so they were probably pretty low numbers.
probably pretty low numbers. So they asked them the same question, "What about cannabis?" "Well, we're sure there's some, but we don't have any documented." They were trying to make a case, the fact that opiates were still fine and cannabis was not. So they came to the conclusion that clearly there's something pretty skewed here. So it's obviously still a stigma. Numbers speak for themselves. You don't have to take my word for it. You Google it, you'll find it yourself.
Yeah, and I want to bounce back to that, my question, just a minute. Benji, you know, we've read those stats as well, you know, and we all understand those things. And...
I don't think anybody understands it, because everybody's so concerned about how far away from a school. Well, anyone can walk in a liquor store, any kid with his parent or whatever. You can't walk in one of these stores. It's not like you're going to be able to purchase it. Alcohol is treated the same, hence the reason it's controlled now by the AGCO. It's treated the same as a controlled substance, but it's clearly not.
So what we're struggling with, I mean, right now, alcohol is illegal, and as you already pointed out, cannabis is legal, right?
Yeah, they're both legal.
So, and so how do you...
Back to your question on the storefront.
But just allow me to finish, Ben. Excuse me, Donny, but so moving forward, the decision that we struggle with, I struggle with, and I can't speak for the rest of my fellow councillors, is, you know, there's so many unanswered questions, and you raised those with your presentation.
Yeah, for sure.
For me, you did.
Listen, we brought this for a discussion for you guys.
Yeah, and exactly, and that's what I took out of it, you know? And I'm not even talking about the cost of setting it up and running it. But when you talked about the necessity for security cameras and disposing of bad product and all those things, I wasn't aware of all of that. And I think that, so if we look at opting in or out, only for myself, I may think that maybe I need to opt out to bring myself a lot more up to speed about what's going on with this. And I'll use an example, when they came here years ago and wanted to put windmills in this town, I said to the presenter at that time, "I don't know much about windmills, but you can rest assured, when you come back the next time, I will." And I did.
For sure.
And that's why they're not here. But that's not the answer to what we're dealing with here tonight. So you guys know us all well enough to know that, I mean, we all want what's best for this community.
I think that's what we're all here for.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, back to the look at the front of the storefront, you know, it's a good question, what's it going to look like? Let me ask you this. Do you think these three guys would build anything that would look bad? Let me ask you this. How does your downtown 200 stores look right now out front? You know, judge a book by its cover. I think this book would put up a good cover.
Those stores are going to get better.
Well, let's hope so. You guys got some work to do, that's your job, not mine. You know, we just want to be a part of the solution, we don't want to be a part of the problem. And I think that's what we're trying to get to you guys, is be part of the solution, not part of the problem. So running behind the problem of opting out, that's a problem to me. It's embracing something that's new, embracing tourism, embracing a new future of our industry that's being built here. Listen, we don't got anything else. Nobody's rushing to Leamington to open up a women's shoe store. Sorry, guys. Nobody's rushing to Leamington to open up any little new shop and boutique. Everything you're doing there isn't working. But you have a new industry called cannabis that is at your doorstep. And there's going to be tons of different potentials out there. And like you said, could it be a destination where couples go and retreat and live their hippie life for a day? I don't know, whatever, right? Who knows? But there's opportunities, and you've just got to look at it. So making a quick decision tonight, you know, based on some facts, yeah, you know what? 50,000 municipality, we're good, we can just opt out for now. Maybe not. Hey, listen, opt in. It's your best bet, because you know what? You know for sure you're not getting one April 1st. So opt in and give people the opportunity to sort of go, "Hey, you know what? Leamington stands behind this new industry, even though we are not going to get a store for a while." And trust me, Government of Ontario is not looking to give out Leamington 20 licenses here. They're going to regulate this pretty good, and you can see it by the numbers of how they broke up the demographics of the 25 they already given out. So if you have any other questions?
Yes, we've got a couple more.
Sure, absolutely.
Bill, you're next.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Gentlemen, I go back to what Councillor Thiessen was talking about. If you guys, we opt in, you put in for the lottery. But it is a lottery, right?
Yeah.
So how is it going to guarantee that we get you, as opposed to somebody...
You're not, you couldn't get somebody else.
That's where then relies the problem, I think, that Councillor Thiessen was thinking about.
But just remember, the lottery, we're not capable of getting one anyways without the 50,000.
Yeah. No, I understand that, but what I'm saying, when it comes available, as soon as we...
When it comes available, we'll be the first in line.
You're going to put your name in, but what I'm saying is, how can we? That's the thing, is that who do we know that is going to end up...
Let me ask you this. If you were the AGCO and you had somebody applying for a license, who already has a liquor license for 23 years with zero infractions, do you think you'd treat that person or look at those applications and look at their criminal background and their RCMP checklist? Because we've already all done them. Benji's done a ton of them for his project, I've already done it over the years. You're going to pick the guys that already have gone through the process, that already hold these licenses in different ways, and you're going to say, "Hey, look, you know what? It's an easier fit than some of these others."
And if you have...
And the cost. The cost is huge, too. I mean, you can't dispel the fact that half a million dollars, and there's no certainty of getting past a year, or, you know, it's a new business, that's going to deter a lot of people. It's not going to be like Mike's Pipes downtown or wherever, whatever, in Windsor, you know, there's all kinds of them.
But being that you're up and communicating about with the Ontario Government regarding the changes to these laws, I'm hoping that it would be you guys, and that's what Mike can...
We're working hard.
I know, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, we need to make it quick, fellas. Actually, I have Councillor Wilkinson first. So keep in mind, not the same questions, if you don't mind.
Sure. I was just going to answer back to Councillor Hammond there, earlier on, when he said about the exterior. I was thinking the exact same thing as Donny was saying. I would take five to 10 of these in my uptown right now. This is good investment that I was looking for. Earlier today, you know, I know nothing about the marijuana culture either, decided to visit Pete's Pipe here in town. You know, it looks nice from the outside, I went inside and guess what? You know, it's really nice, you know, and I had a nice person behind the counter. I just don't think we've got to be a little more open-minded and get over the stigma here. But what we have on display downtown right now versus what I think would be coming down the pipe here with these gentlemen, it'd be such worlds apart. I think we'd be doing our town a great favor at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just make this quick, but I think the biggest issue we have, it's in the back of people's minds, it's a perception, who's coming in to buy this stuff? You know, I don't think, to me, I see a gang wheeling in on a, you know, the Hells Angels coming in on bikes just to buy marijuana. There's users here, people like us that are going in there and using this to, you know, to cut the edge for whatever they do with it. The other thing I'm looking at is the economic impact, Donny, that you're mentioning. You build this up, people come into town, they're going to visit restaurants, they're going to... You want a shoe store to come into town? Well, here's an opportunity for a shoe store to open up in the town, because we're getting that economic reaction on it. And I think those are some of the, you know, especially the user aspect of it. And I think that's something that we have to dispel before anything else goes on. I'm for it, but we'll see where it goes from here. Thank you.
Can I just add something to there that just came to mind? So you say, you know, people come into a store, you know, do you guys know how much 30 grams is your personal allotment? Do you know how much that is? Anybody want to take a guess on how much the dollar figure is on an average $10 a gram? That's $300. Again, people walking in to spend $300 to fill their full amount. You know, maybe it's $7 a gram, so they get a deal one at, you know, $230. These aren't small purchases. The average liquor store purchase is $38.50 per person, you know? So, you know, when you're looking at somebody maybe going in and buying five grams of marijuana or dried cannabis, you know, you're looking at a $40 to $50 purchase. So it's not like, you know, yeah, there's a guy that walks in every 3 o'clock on Monday when I go to pick up my liquor order, who buys that one can of beer for $8, that tall boy, and you're probably going to get the same guy going in and buying one gram of cannabis. But, you know, most people are consuming or purchasing a pretty lofty amount, so it's not like you're, you know, it's a fly-by-night-type place, right? So, yeah, we've got diehards, we've got diehards in the alcohol space, too, you know? The one thing I do want to bring up, too, I noticed you guys said, you know, bringing into different municipality bylaw and the 200 meters away from certain things. You know, I don't disagree, but I want to just make clarity of that. You know, if we were going to do this, we are looking in the space of near a brewer's retail or near an LCBO, because this goes hand-in-hand with that. And the one location we would be looking for is near that liquor store and keep it in the same vicinity. And, you know, there's a bald diamond across the street, so that would take that out of play for us, for sure. It's not a deterrent, but, you know, just remember, the liquor store's across the street. So like Benji said, more people died of alcohol than cannabis consumption.
Zero died from cannabis.
Yeah. So, you know, just be careful. I agree, you want them, you know, away from certain things, but keep in mind where we really want these stores. You want them where there are already similarities. Beer store, liquor store, adults, 19 and over, controlled areas. And that's where we would like to put them if we were looking at this space, so just a heads up. We're not looking at downtown core and...
Great, thank you. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
No problem.
We have the Health Unit yet? Thank you.
You want me to speak on their behalf, too? I can help you out there.
No, we have our gentleman, we have Mr. Nadlin.
I have to follow a lot of Health Unit rules, too. I'm good.
Thank you.
I would like to add that Leamington is fastly becoming the cannabis capital of Canada. And with, at the moment, if I had to make a guess of the four companies in Leamington, probably approaching $800 million in economic activity. That's a lot of money pouring into this town to build facilities, a lot of people. And it might not look, might not look great if we opt out. That's just a point I wanted to make.
Point taken.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Mr. Nadlin, Health Unit, please.
Good evening, Your Worship, Members of Council. I want to thank you for having us here today to speak a little bit more about the public health perspective and implications on the health and wellbeing of our community associated with access to cannabis retail. And I want to add the caveat that when we're referring, when I'm referring to cannabis within the context of the conversation, I'm referring to non-medicinal or recreational cannabis. I'm not referring to cannabis for medicinal or therapeutic reasons. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about our usage rates in Windsor County. I'm going to speak about a series of board resolutions that have been issued since 2016. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about retail of other legal but harmful substances, most notably alcohol and tobacco. And I'm going to speak about cannabis in vulnerable populations and sensitive areas. And I understand that that topic has been brought up. I apologize, I was speaking as a delegation in Kingsville and Essex earlier this evening, so I did miss the first two delegations, I believe. So I apologize if there's some overlap. And then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about opting in and opting out. So cannabis use in Canada. Prior to legalization, it was the most commonly-used illicit substance, with a past-year usage rate of around 12% of those aged 15 years and older. Now, with the statistics, it's important to recognize that this is based on self-report of an illegal product, so it's reasonable to assume that that number's a little bit suppressed. We do have higher rates among men than women and among our youth and young adult populations as compared to the rest of the population. In Windsor, Essex, we see a similar trend, with about a quarter of young adults aged 15 to 29 using cannabis in the last year, and about 10% of those aged 18-plus. So health effects of non-medicinal cannabis. I won't spend a ton of time on this slide, but I want to demonstrate to you that although cannabis is legal and some perceive it to be a natural product, there are health effects associated with consuming it. And those vary along the spectrum from mental health into physical health and into risk of injury, most notably through motor vehicle collision. So recognize that although it is legal, it is, it can be perceived as a natural product, it's not without associated harms. So resolutions, back in 2016, the Board of Health passed a resolution in support of a public health approach to cannabis. Since then, and you'll see as I go through this slide deck, that there's been a number of changes to the regulations. So on October 18th, so about a year prior to legalization, the Board of Health recommended that municipalities develop strict licensing, planning, and zoning regulations associated with cannabis. We've learned since then that that's not going to be possible. On October 18th of this year, so a year following that regulation, or that resolution, the Board of Health recommended that municipalities opt out of cannabis retail within the model that was proposed by the provincial government. We also encouraged the province to set limits on the number of retailers in a geographic area, provide additional regulations with respect to proximity to vulnerable or sensitive areas, and provide additional, the ability for local municipalities to provide additional regulations around zoning and licensing and land use, so that they can further regulate at the local level. This final point, we'll take it a little bit out of context, and I apologize, but the last recommendation was that our municipalities amend existing smoke-free outdoor space bylaws to more explicitly outline cannabis use as an illegal product, or, sorry, as a product that can't be consumed in certain public spaces. This is particularly important for Leamington, as it stands, Leamington is the only municipality in Windsor, Essex, that refers to smoking only within the context of holding lighted tobacco. It's the way that the definition is written, within the context of your smoke-free outdoor space bylaw. So something for council and administration to consider amending that as well. And we have had some preliminary discussions around that. But back to the cannabis retail model, as we know, and as previous delegations have commented on, the only provincial regulation in place right now is this 150-meter buffer distance from schools. And if, to give you a point of reference on that, the Board of Health recommends a 500-meter buffer distance from schools, in addition to a number of other sensitive areas, including, but not limited to, alcohol or tobacco retailers. And so there are concerns about co-use of these products, leading to enhanced impairment, and certainly locating these retail outlets close to those types of establishments has another set of potential harms associated with it. There's no cap on the number of retailers per municipality. Once we get past this April 1st 25 retail sort of lottery, there will be a limitation to seven early on, but this will balloon out to additional outlets. And municipalities, as I mentioned, are prohibited from passing bylaws with regard to licensing or zoning for these establishments. Retail cannabis storefronts have to be standalone stores, as previous delegations have mentioned. Access is restricted to anyone under the age of 19, so these are some positives associated with the regulations. And there's zero tolerance limit for any retailer who provides cannabis to anyone under the age of 19. There's restrictions on hours of operations, and you'll see how quickly these regulations have changed, because even since submitting this presentation to administration and me sitting before you today, this second bullet point has changed. And as we know, there will be a limitation on the number of retail storefronts as of April 1st to 25, and those will be allocated in a lottery manner. So this is that three-step licensing framework that was alluded to by previous delegations as well. There's a retail operator license that will be opened up for people to apply to, which allows you to operate one or more retail stores in Ontario. So that doesn't restrict you to a certain location. That second one, and what council is deliberating tonight, is around store location and layout. So that's second licensing framework there. There is a 15-day public consultation window on the location. There is a 15-day public consultation window on the location. That short of a window is a bit unprecedented in terms of public feedback for something like this. And it is important to consider the amount of steps that will need to go into place to be able to respond and mobilize community partners, including our municipality, including public health, including school boards and law enforcement, to be able to provide a good amount of feedback within that window. So, there are, there is a lot of preparation to be done by those stakeholders to be able to provide that type of feedback. And certainly, you know, by January 22nd, it would be important to opt out so that we have that ability to prepare. And then the cannabis retail manager license would be the most, most responsible person for operations within the store. As I mentioned, and as you all know very well, that you have the opportunity to opt out prior to January 22nd. So, there are a number of concerns for municipalities, and I apologize for the wordiness of this slide, but it speaks to the amount of concerns from a public health standpoint. There is an interaction with municipal smoking bylaws in terms of places that are covered and aren't within the Smoke Free Ontario Act. Considerations around smoking, loitering, nuisance complaints around retailers. There are fewer restrictions on where cannabis, tobacco, and e-cigarettes can be used, which increases that risk of normalization. When we talk about tobacco control, which is an area that certainly we're a lot more familiar with, we talk a lot about normalization and, you know, the, the notion of people consuming these products in public spaces, where if you think about tobacco, if someone were to light a cigarette in, in a prohibited place where tobacco is no longer permitted, you might raise a couple of eyebrows. And that's what we talk about when we talk about denormalization. So, important to target our vulnerable populations, like people who are trying to quit or abstain from cannabis use, and young people, and people that we know already face a disproportionately low level of health relative to the rest of the population, including low income neighborhoods, people who live in low income neighborhoods, people who are susceptible to addiction or mental illness. And so, so I'm trying to illustrate, I guess, that there are a number of public health concerns associated with this. And although it's legal, it's not safe. This is a very brief snapshot of a summary of evidence around alcohol and tobacco retailers. So, these are other legal but not safe products. So, these all speak to retail outlet density, proximity to vulnerable populations along the right-hand side are just a selection of the research evidence that we have available to us, which speaks to a lot of these potential harms. So, I'll summarize it for you. Basically, retail outlet density contributes to increased consumption and harms when we look at these legal but not safe products. So, there is a positive association between alcohol outlet density and excessive consumption and the associated harms that come with excessive consumption of alcohol. There is a normalization and increase of use when a tobacco retail outlet is limited to, or is located near a youth-serving facility. For example, schools with a greater number of retailers surrounding them have a hot, have higher smoking rates. We know that retail outlet proximity to other sensitive areas can negatively influence vulnerable residents, and we see that through our tobacco, tobacco retailers locating themselves in low, low-income neighborhoods. And finally, there are less, when there are less restrictions on where substances can be consumed, it increases the risk of normalization, increases the risk of exposure to vulnerable populations to these products, and increases the possibility for excessive impairment. So, our recommendation is for our municipalities to opt out. There is a one-time window to opt out of retail stores in your community. If that January 22nd date is coming too fast, you can buy yourself as much time as you like. You can opt back in at any later date. While the deadline is January 22nd, this is very recent, following the election, and we feel that by allowing time for more thorough public engagement, stakeholder consultation, and learning from what other municipalities have done. And so, April 1st is the first time that we will see retail storefronts in Ontario. Okay? But if we want to learn lessons from those municipalities who do opt in, delaying and opting out beyond that date is in our best interest. We can look at some of the municipalities in our area that choose to opt in, learn what some of the, what some of the potential concerns are, and prepare better for addressing those concerns. In addition, previous delegations have, have mentioned as well that these regulations have changed frequently. We, and they continue to change frequently as recently as Thursday. So, I think it's really important to consider that, kind of the volatility of the, of the regulatory framework that we're looking at and how, while I would be speculating if I were to say that these regulations are going to change again before April 1st, it is certainly possible. And we do not want to be on the wrong side of being prepared for this in our communities from a public health standpoint. So, that's my presentation. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nadlin. Any questions from council? Mr. Sorry, Deputy Mayor Verbeke.
Thank you, worthy mayor. Eric, I just want to know, is this, this is going to fall underneath the Smoke Free Ontario?
Yes, it does.
So, will you be our smoking police still?
The tobacco enforcement officers out of the health unit, they would enforce the Smoke Free Ontario aspect.
Which also would include tobacco and marijuana?
Tobacco, electronic cigarettes, and cannabis.
Thank you.
If I can ask, are you currently enforcing in our municipality? Because none of us have seen much evidence of the, of the health unit in our municipality, and quite frankly, I have a bit of doubt that you'd be able to handle both the tobacco smoking as well as the cannabis.
So, we have five tobacco enforcement officers that are located within, actually six now, tobacco enforcement officers located within the health unit. The geographical distribution of those officers in terms of responding to complaints in real time, we don't have the capacity to equip them with the same type of equipment that emergency services personnel have in terms of vehicles or sirens or those types of things. We do respond to complaints, or we do respond to issues on a complaint-based basis, and when there are repeated infractions within a certain area or the same, the same people acting in non-compliance repeatedly, we do follow up on those issues when we have a better idea of when those infractions would be taking place. We, we do count on the complaint-based model in terms of responding to that.
Okay, thank you. Council, questions now? All right, then are you ready to debate? Are you ready to make a motion? How, how do we stand? Thank you, Mr. Nadlin. Appreciate your time and, and waiting while, I guess, you were tied up, quite frankly. Anyway, thank you. So, council. Deputy Mayor Verbeke.
Worthy Mayor, in my consulting with my people out there, the straw poll, it's 50/50. So, this is the, the tough decision to make. This is probably going to be the one, hardest one anyone's going to make tonight, so, but I'm, I'm leaning in favor of opting in.
Counsel Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like the deputy mayor stated, I did a lot of conversations with individuals, even police officers in the community over the weekend, and individuals. It was both the same. I think it leaned more towards an excess of 50% of in favor. And the reasons I asked why, like these gentlemen made their presentation tonight, it's something that's been made legal. I think that a lot of it is, from the information I received, was a perception of who's doing it, why they're doing it. In other words, are they going to be high all day long and so forth? And I think that's what we need to dispel. I, along with, with the deputy mayor, am leaning strongly towards opting in. My understanding is, I heard that maybe it was a CK, Deputy Mayor? Went in?
Chadham Kent has just opted in.
Chadham Kent has just opted in, in case you didn't hear. I'm not sure your, your speaker is not on.
No, I didn't push the button.
Okay.
I didn't want.
Worthy Mayor, I'm doing a little bit of background work here with Kingsville and Essex, and I'm following GORD right now too, so it's, and Chadham Kent just opted in.
Is that it then? Counsel Jacobs, yes? Okay. Counsel Hammond.
I'm going to take the opposite position. I think that we have an opportunity to sit and, and if we opt out, we can always get back in at some point. And I too have talked to a number of people in the last week or so, including police officers as well, Counsel Jacobs. And the two that I spoke to were not in favor. They didn't think it was a great thing for us to be opting into at this point in time. As I alluded to earlier, I've spoken to a mayor of another surrounding community who indicated to me that he's had the opportunity to transfer, to travel to some different areas, Colorado being one of them, and wasn't too impressed with what he had to see, without going into much more detail than that. I think there's, in the presentation, as I said earlier, by Mr. Pacheco and these other two fellows, Mr. Simone and Benji, were, just led more questions for me about where are we going to go? There's so many unknown things, and I think buying ourselves a little time, and as what Counsel Tison said earlier, I think that the government has done us a favor by putting that 50,000 mandate on it. If we knew for sure that these three fellows were going to get a story, it would be a different story when they came here. But we don't. And that's, that's for me as a, to me is a fear of the unknown. So, my position will be to opt out.
Mr. Tison. Counsel Tison.
Yeah, I too have asked in a number of circles, and in the circles that I'm running, it's probably closer to 99% that want us to opt out. And aside from, there, there are plenty of social issues around this whole, around the whole thing. And I've been to San Francisco and driven, or on a tour bus around the, is it Haight and Ash, Ashbury? And what the outside, I don't know what the inside of the stores look like, but the outsides, I don't think that's what we're looking for. And until we can, until we can be more sure that we can have more control over where the stores are, who's running the stores, how many there are going to be, I don't see how we can opt in. And once we opt in, we lose all our negotiating or bargaining powers with the province. I want to keep those bargaining powers, and I think we need to partner with some of the other communities who have opted out for the same reasons. Get together with them, and let's put some, put some heat under the government to, to give us some control. At this point, I can't opt in.
Counsel Dunn.
Sir, Madam Mayor, I've, the people I've talked to, it's about a 50/50 as well. And after the presentation from Donnie and the rest of them, marijuana is legal out there, and I am tending to opt in. I really believe that I'd rather have people investing, when they're going to invest $550,000 and put that kind of money into it, the outside of the building, I'm just, that's the way my feelings are, to people to be able to buy those opportunities, to buy the medical marijuana through a store and stuff, that's where I'm leaning towards.
Counsel Wilkinson, did you want to speak to?
Yeah, put a lot of homework into this one this weekend and called around to a lot of people today. Really torn on this one. You know, what Tim Wilkinson as a father thinks? My house, I'd say opt in. The people who voted us here though, I'm hearing more from the side saying, "Don't do it." So, I'm torn. What do I do? Do I do what I think is, you know, as for me, I'm over the stigma. I believe that the federal government made a decision here, put it down to the province, and now it's downloaded to the municipality, and I think it's a new world, new day after October 17th happened. And where I see others opting out, I do see opportunity for Leamington, and I, I got to be open-minded on that. I campaigned on, you know, I want to see good investments, I want to see good businesses in my town. What I just seen here from these three gentlemen is exactly what I was hoping for. That's the type of business that, that's the type of investment I want to see, whether it be in our uptown or any place that can handle it. Leamington's very unique. We have two major powerhouses in town here that are growing marijuana and do it on a world-class level. You know, we're so proud, we come from Leamington about our produce industry, our tomatoes, our cucumbers, our peppers. We go everywhere, we talk about it, and we boast about it. Leamington can grow incredible produce. People drive from the city to come down here to get it all the time. I don't see why marijuana is going to be any different. We grow things in exceptional manner. I think we almost need to celebrate at times how incredible our, our area is for, for farming. And what they're growing is not illegal. It's nothing wrong with it. I know a lot of people, it's not the popular belief, but who are we to judge? You know, I guess is what I ask myself from time to time. You know, looking back here, I remember when Pete's Pates, or Pete's Bites first come to town, I got calls on that. People thought they were going to lose their crap over that one. It turned out, life went on and we're all, and we all got along, and everything's all right. Aphria comes to town, we find out what they're growing, we're pretty thankful now that we got Aphria here in our town. You know, I certainly am. They're bringing lots of great jobs, lots of investment, they're bringing talent here as well. I'm grateful for them. And life, life goes along too with Aphria being in our town. Then Canada legalized a pot. We all thought the world was going to change then too, on October 17th. Turns out it didn't. You know, life goes on and, you know, I hear the stats from the Windsor Police Chief talking there a little while ago. Have you seen any change? And he's like, "No, things are pretty much the same." But what do I do? Do I listen to the people that voted me in, that have called me? They're the more vocal ones that say, "Don't do it." And the reason why they're saying it, and this kind of is, I got a little bit of issue with it, it's just because of a moral stigma that they have. There is no, you know, when it comes to my family, I'd rather my son or daughter, you know, I'd take marijuana over tobacco or alcohol. I would. And I'd like to know that they're going to get it in a safe manner versus going to wherever, black markets. I would like that option. That appeals to me. So, that's the way I say the Wilkinson House kind of thinks, but as for the people, I know it's not going to be popular, and it would, in fact, cost us votes. But, yeah, I'm, that's how my decision's going to go, so I'm leaning in favor as well.
Well, I guess that leaves me. And you're right, this is one of the most difficult decisions, gentlemen, that I think we will ever have to make. But this is not a moral decision. That moral decision was made by the federal government when they decided October 17th was the date. I am not responsible. I'm not, we are not responsible for people's children. We're not responsible for what people do. We are responsible for business decision that's going to affect our community. And this, this decision will affect our community. When I was first interviewed about opting out, I think Paul had just told me the words "opting out." I didn't even realize what it meant. I was interviewed, and right away I was like, "Oh, yeah, we'll opt out," because I was afraid they were taking away the LCBO model. But now what I saw here tonight has given me a little more confidence that there is going to be a model similar to that. And if we, if we opt in at the beginning, when, when these bigger players are looking to invest, I want to be in with them. I don't want to be in when the, the gates open up and everything's flooded. And I appreciate what you said, Pastor, but this is coming. Whether it comes now or it comes in two years, it is coming to every community in this province. In fact, I just spoke to Paul Barnable. In Newfoundland, cannabis is sold in the grocery store. So, for us to think that we can save ourselves, our next generation from this, heck no. Not, not the people at this table, not the people at this level. So, I believe because of the investment in this community, we have a responsibility to back the businesses that are here. We escaped, luckily, the leaving of Hines, and we aren't in the situation that Oshawa is in right now. And Windsor, if they don't get their head out of the sand, could very well be in the same situation. And I'm concerned when people say they're worried about what the neighboring communities do. When have we, when has Leamington ever worried about what the neighboring community does? We are always so adamant that we are not going to wrap ourselves up with those kinds of worries. We need to stand alone here. We're, we're the leader. We didn't choose to be the leader in this business. It was put upon us. But I will say, our administration and our mayor at that time when Aphria first came, made the decision that maybe this was a good idea, and now it's handed down to us. We've got great jobs. We've got entry-level jobs. We have jobs that will be here for a long time. We have other businesses looking. It isn't even just Natra-Naturals and Aphria. Tilray, there's Canopy, there's more looking. And I believe that the eyes of this business are on this community right now to see what our decision's going to be. And I believe they want to see if we are brave enough, if we have the guts, if you will, to make this decision. It isn't easy. And yes, I know morally, if, if Justin Trudeau would have asked me what my opinion was about cannabis, I would have said, "Heck no," more vehemently than that. But, but they, that level decided, and now we have to play it out. I'm not happy with the province either. They, they in one way are telling us everything that we can't do, and meanwhile then telling us everything we can do. At the end of the day, we're like the guy that has to sweep up the clippings, and I resent that. I want to see us get more control, but I also feel by buying in, opting in at this point, we have a lot better opportunity to get those big players who are willing to invest $500,000, $200,000 to open a store. invest $500,000, $200,000 to open a store. I don't want to wait till, I'm gonna say the riffraff, but, but to me, when the floodgates open, you're not going to have that caliber of investment in a storefront. Will I ever use cannabis? No. I'm asthmatic, I wouldn't dream of it. And if I'm going to eat a brownie, I'm eating the whole brownie. So this does not, this, I have, I have zero, I have zero interest in this. But again, I need to deal with it, I need to be realistic. I need to know what is happening in my community. And we are leaders in this community. And when people say we should have done a survey, we did a survey on the alcohol down at, at Seacliff Park. We had people from Winnipeg answering. What, what kind of a survey is that? That's not our people. That, that is a moot point. People from who knows where can answer it. We're talking to our people. Yes, we're getting the emails, but they were all based on moral issues. And I'm sorry folks, that train has left the station for us. So, with that being said, what are counsel's wishes? Counselor Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's gonna be times when we disagree. The only thing I will refute in what you just said was, and it's true, for the most part, we don't care what surrounding municipalities do. And quite honestly, I don't. But when the people in those surrounding municipalities start coming to Leamington to buy their product, and people from Detroit come here to buy this product, then I do care. And that's what I believe is gonna happen. So that's the only part of your rebuttal that I'll dispute.
I will, I will somewhat rebut your rebuttal and say marijuana is now legal in Michigan. Sarn, you just opted in this evening, as did Chadam Kent.
Good for them. And I'd also like a roll call vote.
So Counselor Jacobs.
Your worship, just get this going. I'll make a motion that we opt in.
Need a second for that. Seconded by Counselor Verbeke. It is recorded vote.
So when I, those who are in favor of opting, those who are in favor of opting in, please raise your hand and leave it until I call your name. Counselor Dunn in favor, Deputy, or Mayor McDonald in favor, Deputy Mayor Verbeke in favor, Counselor Wilkinson in favor, Counselor Jacobs in favor. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Counselor Thiessen and Counselor Hammond not in favor.
There is an amendment to Schedule A, I believe, where Counselor Wilkinson wanted the addition of library. So I would need a motion, Counselor Wilkinson. Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor, or Deputy, sorry, Deputy Mayor Verbeke. All in favor of adding library to the list of restricted places? And that's carried, thank you. Certainly, Mr. Thiessen.
I would also like to, if we, if we could, direct the administration to look further at other areas that maybe we should be looking at restricting the, how close they are to retail outlets. I'm thinking, none of the parks are on here. The only thing that's on there right now is the parks, or is the schools. What about all the parks and all the other daycare that we currently have?
If you look at the map in your report, the ball diamonds are on there, the parks are on there with the, with the circles around them.
Right, they're on there, but that doesn't guarantee that we can't get that. We'll have to negotiate that with the province, right?
I'm not sure who wants to take that.
This is only the submission that we would be making to the AGCO. So the AGCO only considers matters that are related to the public interest. So what the policy, if, if counsel passes the policy, what it would do is then instruct administration to make those submissions to the AGCO based upon the notices that are published by the AGCO. There's nothing that would guarantee that the AGCO would take those things into consideration.
The CEO, Peter Neufeld, has a comment.
I believe that with respect to the parks, the, right now, there is a, there are restrictions. Sorry, let me do it this way. Cannabis use can be in the same vein as smoking tobacco. We are looking, administration is looking to bring bylaw amendment restricting smoking in our parks of tobacco, which will then also limit the use of cannabis in those areas. So that will become.
Ms. Percy?
Before we move on, counsel passed a motion to amend the policy. I had just asked that counsel put a motion forward to pass the policy as amended, which is number two on the screen.
It's semantics, isn't it? It's about the words.
So because counsel passed the motion to opt in, they'll need to pass the policy to be applied. So the first motion, the motion you just did was to add the libraries. So you'll need a motion to pass the policy as amended.
So motion to pass the policy as amended. Moved by Counselor Jacobs, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. All in favor. Counsel and staff, we're going to move to 11.4, which is the Cwatts' report. Alan? That is page 87 to 90.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to obtain a counsel approval and recommendations so that we can apply for some Cwatts' funding at the Active Transportation Committee meeting in January 2019. So Cwatts' study sets out specific procedures for the approval and construction of infrastructure initiatives. And annually municipalities in Essex County must submit complete applications to Active Transportation Committee for, for funding considerations. The Cwatts' committee then recommends projects to county council as part of the county budget discussions. And this is typically done in September, but this year due to, due to the elections, it was delayed until January. Cwatts' applications are deemed complete if they are accompanied by a declaration of the project and funding commitment by means of a resolution or letter from municipal council, which again is the purpose of this report tonight. So the projects that we were putting forward for 2019, Cwatts' funding are Leamington, what we call Leamington 8, Leamington 9, and Leamington 22. And you can see those on Appendix A of my staff report. And I also provided some color copies or blowups of the, of the specific design of those three segments to council in 11 by 17, hard copy at your desk there. The noted projects are within the recognized settlement and built-up areas. So per the Cwatts' program, they are eligible for funding and cost sharing would be 40% from the Cwatts' budget and 60% from the municipal budget. In the 2018 budget, counsel did approve $29,000 for functional design of the subject Cwatts' segments. The amount was funded $17,000 by Leamington and $11,000 from the Cwatts' budget. Those functional design studies are now complete. And Leamington is now able to submit an application for construction. So specifically, Leamington 8 is for the construction of bike lanes on Talbot Street West from the Albert Fox intersection westerly to the trail towards the, the old high school. We estimate the cost to be approximately $35,000 for that work. Leamington 9 is an application for the construction of bike lanes on Talbot Street East from Victoria easterly towards and just short of County Road 34. We estimate the construction of that work to be $57,000. Leamington 22 is an application for construction of bike lanes on Seacliff Drive West between Erie Street South and Branton Avenue. And we estimate that work to be approximately $80,000. And that would tie into the work we're doing on County Road 20, westerly towards Kingsville. The total Leamington share for the cost of the works we're proposing for 2019 is $103,000. And that's laid out in our table in the financial impact section of my staff report. And we can, we will consider the funding source for the works during the 2019 budget process. So again, there is a recommendation before you.
Thanks, Alan. Is there any questions on this? Counselor Paul?
So Alan, when you're putting in these bike lanes, we're not widening the roads, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So my concern has been in the past and going forward is that we're narrowing up these roads to a point where I'm not so sure that even that is safe anymore. The issue I have, so if we're, some of these are, some of these lanes are down to, and I'm gonna use feet, imperial measurement, because that's what I understand, nine and a half feet wide. Legal truck width is eight and a half feet wide. So you've got six inches on either side. You've got a foot between two trucks passing each other. I, I'm just, and I realize that the whole concept of traffic coming and everything else, squeeze it together and they'll slow down. I just am concerned that, that we're squeezing things too much. I'm also concerned with the current bike lane that's out here in front of the old Blondies, which all of a sudden goes out in the middle of nowhere. I was able to witness something the other night that I just couldn't believe I was seeing. Nobody knew where to drive. And whether it's because of the blocked out lane, or whether it's because the white lines have worn off already, or what it is, but I realize we need bike lanes. I'm just not sure just painting lines on existing roads is the way to do it. Because I think we're just, we're squeezing everybody in tight, we're ending up with road rage. And things are, it's just a little too tight. That's the only concern I've got with it.
Counselor Hammond.
Your worship, thank you. And Alan, reading through this report today, I had much of the same thoughts. It sounds like Counselor Thiessen and I talk all the time, which we don't. I had something strange happen with me too. I was heading north on, right out here in front of Blondies, as you already alluded, heading north, there were two cars wanting to make a left-hand turn and go into the fire department. So I stopped behind them. There were four cars past me in the right-hand side, had to be going 30 or 40 kilometers an hour past me. When they went through the intersection, they were okay. But when they ended up the other side of the intersection, heading north, they were all in the bike lanes. Every one of them. And just one right after the other.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So Alan, I guess you, you have your, the budget here of 100 and some thousand, so this is all just paint, right? Paint and sandblasting off the old lines and rearranging a few things, there's really nothing, we're not pouring concrete or nothing, or new signals or anything, it's just mapping out and stenciling in the bike lanes?
For the most part, you're correct. There's a lot of line painting, there will have to be some associated signage. But there is a little bit of construction work along Seacliff Drive, just, or between Shirk and Branton. That we just could not get done as part of the Cwatts' work that's ongoing right now. So if you have a look at sheet eight in the, the blowup, on the top, the top frame, you'll see some grayed out area just east of Branton, just to the right-hand side of Branton. We have to put, basically, it's a double-wide sidewalk. One will be a trail for the bike and one will be a walkway. So that's, that's the extent of the really heavy construction work for this.
Worthy Mayor, if I got gone, I just want to know then, and I think it's gonna come up eventually, but we're not gonna have that with sidewalks or bike lanes. So you're saying you have to put new sidewalks in, and I'm assuming that has to be cement? And if so, why? Are you continuing that bike lane? Like, it looks like the gray area, to me it says concrete. And that's already existing?
Well typically, we, we have been, to be consistent, the trail along, along County Road 20 is asphalt. We like to construct concrete sidewalks.
Could you, sorry, sorry. Could you not make that, that's what I'd like to see over there, maybe on number three at Leovis, is a six or seven-foot wide asphalt bike path sidewalk combined. So, I mean, you know, I just, I don't want to cut costs, but it's, you know, that's okay. But that's, thank you for your explanation.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alan, on that, between Branton Drive and wherever it's coming out there prior to Shirk Street, is that going to, there's currently a concrete sidewalk, correct? And then you're gonna put asphalt on the other side of that? Is that what I'm looking at? Is that how that works out?
Well, just because of the layout and alignments, we have to remove the concrete sidewalk and put in new asphalt and new concrete just west of, I guess just west of your driveway. Just east of Branton.
Okay, I don't feel so bad. But no, I was just curious, I, I don't know why it's...
It just has to do with the alignments and offsets that, it just has to do with the necessary alignments and offsets for the trail. That we have to remove what's there and reconfigure the system.
Counselor Wilkinson.
And Alan, just looking at these things, back to Counselor Thiessen's first comments, I think what makes this so odd out here is because it goes around parking spots, of course, that's where it gets you out. But that example isn't gonna happen with any of these where there's a parking spot that the bike lane has to veer around. Is there?
No, there's no parking in the, in the areas that we're looking at putting the bike lanes with these projects. There's no parking today.
Another question, are you finished, Counselor Wilkinson? I assume he is. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, Alan, so you, you mentioned that if you're moving the sidewalk and putting in the asphalt on, off of the road. Is that possible in any of these, any of these other projects? To put it off of the road and on between the sidewalk and the road? Or is there any way that we can somehow widen the area back to where we currently are?
Well, much of what we're considering is, is part of the approved AT, our own AT study, our own AT plan, our Active Transportation Plan. And in that, we didn't look at reconstruction or adding curbing or widening or purchasing properties, it was just add, add the bike lane. And that's kinda what we're following through here, or with here in this case.
Right, and I understand that. What I'm, what I'm saying is that I think all over town, especially Talbot Street East is a major thoroughfare, so is Seacliff, and we're narrowing them up. I just think it's gonna lead to problems down the road. And maybe we need to start looking at keeping the road widths the way they are. Again, let's go back to Talbot Street East, you're gonna have trucks going through there. And if you've only got a foot, if they're in their proper lanes, you're only gonna have a foot or a foot and a half between them as they're passing each other. Not a whole lot of room. And then you, the trucks are also trying to stay away from the bikes who aren't riding against the curb, they're riding against the inside white line, and you gotta give them three feet of room. Just a thought.
I guess my, my one comment would be that, you know, we're trying to strive for the travel lanes to be three meters or greater. And that's typically plenty of room in, in the roads I've designed in the past and, and that we've been driving on for years. That's, that's typically okay. We do have a situation, just for reference sake, much of the lanes between, on Oak Street, between Erie and Shirk are quite narrow. They're less than three meters wide. And those seem to be functioning okay. It's not what I would want. It's not what I would want, but that's what we ended up with. But the three meters, 3.2 meters, 3.3 meters is generally accepted as an appropriate lane width.
Just rebuttal to that, maybe in the vehicles you're driving, but, and I don't drive a big truck anymore. I'm down to a half-ton pickup now and it's not wide enough. Sorry.
So Counsel, I'm looking for your direction.
I'll move it, Worthy Mayor.
Moved by Counsel, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Verbicki.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Wilkinson. All in favor? Opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you, Alan. I guess since we're nearing the witching hour, I will need a motion to extend past 10:00 PM. It has to be unanimous, so if anyone's considering not voting for it, it will involve another meeting before Christmas.
Worthy Mayor, I'll move that we go till, yeah, I guess till we're done.
Till we're done. Seconded by Counsel Jacobs. All in favor? All in favor? And that's Carrie. Thank you. Comment from the CAO.
You'll notice that the, that our representatives from the Economic Development Office have been sent home. So we'll do that report, provided Counsel is, is okay with that, that we'll, we'll set that off to another meeting.
So we're moving the Highbury Canco pedestrian crossing. And that's pages 81 to 86. Again, Alan.
Rob would like to...
Oh, I believe opening comments from Mr. Sharon.
Yes, yes, your worship. It seems to be the theme of the night, but Administration recognizes that this report and the options presented to Counsel may not be necessarily desirable. But I think what faces us tonight is that Administration and Counsel has a problem that we need to solve. We have a large, very important food processing facility in our municipality located in the urban area. The processing facility is divided by an arterial road in our community. So this inherited design leads to pedestrians wanting to cross between the front doors of the facility. And I think we have to, we have to recognize that, we have to recognize that that in turn leads to pedestrian vehicle conflicts. And that is highlighted by the fact that we've had, just within the last couple of years, a fatality, multiple accidents and many near misses. So what Administration has endeavored to do here is bring to Counsel what we believe are the best options for Counsel to consider. And we're certainly here to hear your wishes and do bid in Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Counsel and Administration have considered a number of times in recent history this pedestrian crossing situation on Erie Street South between the main doors of Highbury Canco. And I also wanted to note that John Toffelmeier from RC Spencer's here tonight, he's waited faithfully in case we need to ask him any questions. And I guess his, we'll call upon him depending on how I do with your questions. The existing location is marked with pavement markings and courtesy crossing signs. In 2017, it was proposed by Administration to combine the Active Transportation Plan of bike lanes on Erie Street South with the new pedestrian crossover rules to modify Erie Street South between Oak Street and Melrose by adding bike lanes, changing the cross-section from four lanes of travel to, to three lanes, and that would be two lanes of travel and a center two-way left turn lane. And then we proposed adding a flashing PXO crossing at the Highbury location. This was not approved by Counsel. And in the summer, in this past summer, Administration received Counsel's approval to engage a professional engineer and traffic practitioner to prepare a study on possible options to address how and if pedestrians should cross Erie Street in the vicinity of Highbury Canco in, in front of their main doors. So RC Spencer has now completed that study and in, within the study, which Counsel received a copy of, they did note that a mid-block pedestrian signal is not justified, and that was considered by, by Dillon as well in 2012. And that would be, what I'm describing is a signal similar to that which is at the hospital on Talbot Street with the red amber-green lights. They also note that the crossing at Highbury is very busy, or relatively busy, I'm sorry, and that there is a desire line by users to cross the road there, and that supports some type of controlled crossing. They also concluded that prohibiting a crossing, or argue that prohibiting a crossing at this location is likely going to be difficult to enforce as the crossing's been in place for decades and the drop-off, or the, the bays, the drop-off bays have also been in place for decades. And as noted in, in Figure Two, just wanted to draw your attention to Figure Two in the staff report, that's the, after a traffic count, RC Spencer determined the number of vehicles that are using each of the lanes in the, in the southbound direction of Erie Street, just south of Oak Street. So as you can see in that Figure Two, their report notes that 75% of the southbound traffic in the vicinity, just south of Oak Street, is using the, the center lane of the road, not the curb lane in the road. So given this information, it was the opinion of Administration that a marked crossing is justified in this location. RC Spencer has evaluated three options and has, and Administration has added a fourth for consideration, and those are listed in, in my staff report. So a mid-block pedestrian signal is not recommended as the conditions do not satisfy warrants. It would cause the greatest delays to motorists and it is also the most expensive. Option Two revisits the previously proposed PXO or flashing amber lights and the reconfiguration of Erie Street to have bike lanes, two lanes of travel and a center two-way left turn lane, as was approved by the Active Transportation Plan. And Option Three, which is the new one, fits into the PXO decision-making tool which is shown in, in staff report as Figure One. That's the decision make, matrix that goes into choosing what type of PXO would be best suited for the location. And that's from Book 15. And I actually brought a copy of Book 15 in case anyone wondered if it was a real thing. We do quote it a lot. It's, it also follows the results of recent traffic counts, again, that just over 75% of the traffic does not use the curb lane in this location. The minor traffic in the curb lane will merge to the left into the center lane between Oak Street and the crossing. A flashing system similar to the system that we've installed on Seacliff Drive near the Roma Club would be installed. And Administration added a fourth option for discussion because the existing courtesy crossing signs should be removed as they are non-standard. The existing safety concern that exists today will continue to exist if Option Four is selected. We've had incidents reported in the month, we've had two incidents reported in the month of November relating to this crossing. The crossing would be configured with new signs that notify drivers of a crossing ahead and notify pedestrians that vehicles do not have to stop and that pedestrians must stop and wait for gaps in the traffic before they cross the road. So Administration is recommending that a pedestrian crossover be installed that meets the criteria set out in Book 15 to replace the existing courtesy crossing at that crossover location as presented as Option Three, Alternative Two in the staff report.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Alan, can you confirm something for me just to be 1,000% sure? A PXO is what's currently at the liquor store, correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct. That's one type of PXO.
I'm just wondering, why isn't there an option then for a PXO with four lanes of
I, I can't say I can tell you why, I can tell you it's not in the matrix. And it has to do with traffic volumes. If you look at the, at Figure Two in the report, in my staff report, you'll, you'll see that the practitioner is looking at traffic volume. So the numbers in the left, in the far-left column are the, is the number of hours. So they'll, they'll count traffic for four hours or they'll try, count traffic for eight hours and then decide what's your maximum traffic count for that stretch of road. So in this case, we're looking at, I think it was just over 9,500 vehicles per day. So that, you have to fit that into the matrix. So finding that point, which is 7,500 vehicles, it's between 7,500 and 17,000 vehicles, and then you move to the right and the options start to disappear. Because when you change, when you change those conditions, then you're looking at different types of crossings. So from statistics and studies, the people that wrote the OTM used those, that information and all the other information that was available to them, and they said, if your speed is 50, 50 kilometers an hour and you have this much traffic on the road, you can apply this type of traffic, this type of crossing. When you get more traffic and your road speeds are higher or, or your road speeds are higher, then you go beyond this tool and you're into full signalization. I think I've covered that.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, I looked at this, this chart last night and yeah, it's difficult to wrap my head around, but no, I thought that would have been a valid option myself. That's all I had. Worthy Mayor?
Thank you, Counsel Wilkinson. I have Counsel Jacobs next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, like I'm somewhat astonished that we have to go through this exercise to put something in for grown individuals to cross the street when there's stoplights and everything else. I know that it's creatures of habit type thing, but I think we have to go up above and beyond. But anyway, if I go, Alan, with the Figure One that you gave us, like the 1,700 cars in an eight-hour period, but you're not breaking them down per hour, like is it a constant high flow or is it just during lunchtime, going to work, after work? Does that have any impact on a single? Like if you're having 100 cars every 15 minutes, I could see maybe some different configuration, but are they going down there? Is it, you know, one car per minute type thing or, like everybody doesn't identify that?
No, and typically you wouldn't do that. You would either do a four-hour count or an eight-hour count and you'd look at, I think it's the greatest one hour or so that you look at and, and then you come up with the, I'm not a traffic practitioner, I guess we could ask John, but essentially, you don't count the number of cars, you look at the greatest, like a peak hour during the day. And then there's a multiplier and that, and you come up with the number of vehicles per day. So that's how Spencer arrived at the 9,500 vehicles.
But your graph does not show a peak hours. There, it's just, these are for eight-hour, four-hour, eight-hour, four-hour, eight-hour, four-hour. I mean, it's not saying between 11 and 12 or 11 and, this is when the traffic is. I'm just going along with Counsel Wilkinson. I, you know, I, I know the engineering aspect of it and, you know, the reasoning behind all of this, but I, I just get confused with it all after a period of time. We can do this, we can't do that.
John can expand on it, but essentially you have to rely on the traffic professionals to come up with your average annual daily traffic, whether it's 500 cars an hour for two hours and then, and you know, you get a nice curve of traffic throughout the day, really busy in the morning, busy in the, at noon, busy in the evening. But they, there's still methods of determining through some equations and factors determining your average annual daily traffic, and that's the number that goes into this matrix.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. When I was looking through this, I was a little concerned with the numbers here, but I was also looking for an Option Five and I don't see it. And I do believe we have a chance for an Option Five. Since most of the traffic is going through the center lane, why can we not, from Oak to Erie, just have one lane? You have your left-hand turn lane east, you have your right-hand, right-hand only west and have a center lane. And then once you get past this so-called courtesy crossing, this PXO, you're only going to have one lane there and then heading north, you'll have one lane and then where their parkout, their bumpout is there for their parking, then you can continue and leave it where your dark hash marks are to go back to your three lanes, left, straight and right. Because you're going to have a problem here, just like there was a problem before when it was reconfigured, because when you're at that light, you want to be the first one on that light heading north to try to beat the 711 one. So now you've put it in there that's only a right-hand turn only. And I think if you do the same thing here, have two lanes, you're going to have people almost doing a quarter mile to try to get to that single lane up there too. So that's also going to create a problem. So I think the other option is to just do reconfiguring and just have just one southbound lane, the center lane only. And then when you get up to, if you want to do Morgan, you want to do Georgia and then go back to the, the two lanes and you're coming back northbound, you're going to do the, the same thing, you're going to come two lanes up to there. That's, this is, this is my common sense talking, so I know that's, I'm a professional in that.
Professional and common sense? With that, we'll move to the CAO.
So, so actually, just for clarification, Deputy Mayor Verbicki, I think what I'm, what I thought I heard you say was continue the profile of Erie Street from just north of Oak through Morgan or, or Georgia and then branch back out into the, the four lanes again. And I think that's very similar, if not exactly, Option, Option Two without the bike lanes. But I would suggest that one way to control the, the cars is to create the bike lanes anyway. And so we're going back to what was actually, I think, recommended by, by Administration to Counsel back in May or June, just to get us through this, this component. And that way, the, I believe the right-hand lane on Erie Street just at the intersection and north of Oak becomes a right-hand turn lane only, right? So that we, what you're, what was described here in, in lane, sorry, in Option Three, which you have, that you have some concerns about, this jackrabbit starting, you have to understand, I think that this option that was brought forward is the best option of what options we have left. So I can tell you that, I, I think that Administration would certainly support the, the idea that you're, that you've had, subject to, you know, looking back to our consultant to say, you know, is, is this not exactly where, is it, is it doable? I think that's a, that's a way of looking at it.
Mr. Toffelmeier?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with Mr. Neufeld that what you're suggesting, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is very similar to what had previously been recommended, the alternative with the bike lanes. Because at the crossing location, you had one lane southbound, one lane northbound, and then a center sort of crosshatched area which turned into a center left turning lane south of this crossing location. So at the crosswalk itself, it was one lane in each direction with a bike lane. Now, if, if you delete the bike lane, which you don't really need to do, but if you delete the bike lane, you're left with what you're suggesting. Now, just for clarification, and these, this full alternative is in the main report, which you have access, Figure One, the middle alternative. At the intersection of Oak Street itself, you would retain northbound, the, the left turning lane, the through lane, a bicycle lane and a right turn lane. Southbound was just a single lane... Southbound was just a single lane and the bike lane. So that was the basis, really, of the earlier recommended plan, and it does work with the standards for the crosswalk. The difficulty in all of this, and maybe to reflect back on Counselor Wilkinson's question, these, um, standards in the matrix were developed by the ministry and they take into account a lot of variables. There are a lot of variables. And as the traffic volumes increase and as the numbers of lanes increase, the difficulty is, and frankly, this is what we're experiencing out there now with the safety concerns and the incidents that have happened. You have the two lanes of traffic in each direction and there's no lines of sight. There's too many cars that get in the way and you're concentrating more on the driving activity and you don't have enough time to react to the, to the queues of the pedestrians coming across. And it's just a situation that leads you to need traffic controls. An uncontrolled situation is not working anymore safely. And so that combination gets worse as volumes increase. So these standards for PXOs, you're trying to minimize the number of variables. So we're trying now to minimize the width, minimize the number of lanes and so on. So by reducing this cross-section from through, from four lanes to three, now the southbound traffic is just in one lane. So now everything gets more simple. The distances, the sightlines, the, the variables that you have to deal with in terms of driving. And so that's why it now meets a warrant for control, uh, controlled crossing device like the PXO. So that, that's kind of the, I hope that helps to clarify that a little bit. There's just a lot of variables involved. And, and so we're trying to simplify it. And this type of location with this type of volume, you gotta get it to three-lane or a DED to be three-lane cross-section.
Yeah, thanks, John, but so, the way I'm reading this here then too, so if you're still heading northbound, there'll still be two lanes in this PXO?
Yes. In what's recommended in the Administration report, southbound would be narrowed by means of a merge that would meet all the standards and have one lane southbound through the PXO. Northbound would retain existing two lanes.
And how, how, sorry, uh, how are we merging then, uh, southbound?
Does southbound merge?
With the, the paint and the bike lane?
I'm talking now without the bike lane, talking the, uh, the, the report that you have, the Administration report, referring to figure three.
Yes, no, I'm looking at it right now, but yet in figure three, you're still showing two-lane southbound.
There's two lanes southbound immediately, south of the intersection.
So then that's...
And then you see the crosshatched area adjacent...
Yeah, but that's where the jackrabbit starts are going to be. They're going to try to be the first, they're going to have the jack, they're going, they're going to do the quarter-mile there until they get, until they get to that. Now, if you just cannot control that, can you not just make that a single lane, southbound from Oak to Georgia or Morgan?
That can be done, but it would require a lot more digging without, it's a lot easier to do that with the bike lane. You can, you can see it in, in the middle alternative of that, but if you're retaining the existing configuration, you've got two lanes of width. Well, guess what? People are still going to use the two lanes of width. All right? But let me go back, because I disagree with your conclusion that that's going to be some type of, uh, a problem. This is the simplest merge, you know, as a driving activity that you can get. And, uh, I think I, I tried in my report to point out that with three times the num, the numbers, you got, uh, three-quarters of the traffic in the center lane already, you got one-quarter of the traffic in the curb lane, most of it's coming from a right turn. The propensity is you want to get into the left lane anyway, and it's a simple driving maneuver to make the merge. You can see it coming. It's really, I, I do not think that this is a difficult, um, maneuver. I do not think that people will be drag racing down there to get there because they simply got to merge. They don't have to speed, they can just move into it and then they can move back. And I don't, I don't think that it's a setup for any kind of problem.
So that's, that's also like your, your right-hand lane when you're turning, I'm talking Shirk now. You're going down Shirk, everybody's either cutting down Melrose, excuse me, or Palford and they're using the bike lane to go by. Anyway, I'm just, I just want to say that painting lines would be better.
I believe Mr. Sharon would like to contribute to the...
Your worship, um, Counsel notes the recommendation from Administration, but Counsel will also note that in the report, um, I included a line to, just to note to Counsel that it's not in line with the Act of Transportation Plan. And quite frankly, Administration was being very respectful of Counsel's decision, um, earlier in 2018 regarding, uh, bike lanes and narrowing the road. Um, Administration, I think I can speak with the majority of the group around the table. If Counsel is considering something more similar to the PXO Alternative One, uh, that essentially has a single lane in each direction, it does include the bike lanes, um, you know, we would certainly be supportive of that. And frankly, likely more supportive than the recommendation you see before you. Uh, again, we made that recommendation because we were trying to respect Counsel's wishes from earlier in the year. With regards, um, Deputy Mayor, to your concern, um, about the, the race, um, you know, to that particular merge point, um, we have had some conversations about that. And, and there, there would be a way, if, if, and then frankly, if Counsel adopted that, I was hoping to have a conversation with Counsel about that particular issue, is that we, we could make the outside lane a right-turn only, um, onto Oak Street. Thus, everyone in that right-hand lane would be turning right, heading westbound on Oak as opposed to, to a through lane. That would tend to move that traffic along, um, a little bit quicker. From that, that right-turn lane, for those going right, they wouldn't have to wait for a, a green light, uh, for the traffic in front of them to go straight. Uh, I think the one drawback consideration that we have to be made aware of is if the through lane backs up too far, that right-hand turn lane is a shorter lane. You could run into a situation where, um, the, the through traffic, the southbound traffic queues up and then prohibits vehicles from entering that outside lane in order to turn right, and that may cause some, some slight delays. And so we have discussed those, those matters. And if, if Counsel does select alternative number two, um, you know, we could make the right lane, the outside lane, right-turn only.
Counsel Jacobs, I have you next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, uh, figure three, with the two northbound lanes going up, you got the merge going south and then you got the two. I thought we were trying to get it down to two lanes to work the PXOs. Was I under the wrong assumption to that because you were afraid that a curb lane car would overtake the car in the middle?
My view of it is that if we can get it down to three lanes, it fits into the decision matrix and we can use a PXO. We were striving for three lanes.
Madam Mayor, may I ask, uh, add one point of clarification. In the alternative with one traffic lane in each direction and the two bike lanes, basically in the matrix, the two bike lanes are considered as one traffic lane, if you like. So that's really a three-lane cross-section.
I believe the CAO has a comment.
What I had said earlier was that the option that you hear is getting it down to two lanes so that we can use the PXO. All right? But this, this is the best alternative that's left if we discount what Administration brought in, in June. And so building on what, uh, Mr. Toffmeyer just said, with two lanes of traffic and two bike lanes, it's the equivalent of three and we can use the PXO. And I think that's really where Administration was trying to, to get to for a number of reasons. Not the least of which is the, the cost of, of the equipment is quite a bit less if it's a PXO. And you don't have the potential of the traffic backing up into Oak Street. So there are a number of, uh, good reasons why the original plan was brought forward. But as Mr. Sharon said, and I want to repeat it, it was out of a great deal of respect for the fact that you, that Counsel had earlier turned that down, that we didn't want to harp on it and, and find another alternative. But I can see that Counsel is struggling with the new alternative that we brought as well, uh, which is why we're saying perhaps what we're hearing is, let's go back to the other and see if we can make that work. And if that's what we're hearing, that's, that's terrific. I just, I want to make sure we understand.
Certainly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I like number three. I have, I have no problem with three, but there, this does not include bike lanes, am I correct? We're not putting bike lanes because we had that lengthy discussion previously.
Does he need figure three or option three?
Can you clarify which option you're talking about? Because the one does include bike lanes.
Number three.
Figure three?
Option three.
Okay, all right. Can I just say for a minute, I think, I think our approach to this has changed since the fatality and then, I believe, the week before, there was another serious accident. It, it definitely points towards the direction that we have to find a solution to this, that, that will work and, and not cause a lot of headaches. I'm sure we'll get some pushback just because it's changed, but I, I don't think we have a choice in this matter. So then I will let Mr. Dunn speak next.
It's you, Madam Mayor. As Highbury keeps getting busier and busier and we have more, uh, more employees there and we're, we're trying to create more of a C-Watch and more bike trails everywhere, it just, naturally, we should be going back to option two and having the bike lanes and reducing the, the road that they presented back in May, just up to Georgia even. So that way we can reduce it, just so we can get past that, so we can use that PXO. If we don't, we go back to using the bigger, um, traffic light signal, which is going to cause shutting down the street. It's a traffic light then a secondary traffic light. That's why we need to do something. You're just going to have the restriction of the road come out and not utilize having bikes. We are getting more bikes in this town all the time, more and more micro workers. And they are going to come out with welcome packages, keeping them and teaching them to be on the, the bike paths. So we want to try and encourage those bike paths as opposed to not. And that's why we should go back to option two and be done with this, take it up to Georgia and then let it go back out to the four lanes. You've cleared that section, you've got that, the proper crosswalk there with the proper lighting and we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Teason.
I really am shocked for having this discussion because the absolute safest route for the people to take from one side of the road to the other is up the stairs, over the top and back down. And I see Mr. Kruger shaking his head. The other safe option is to go down to the stoplight, which is already there, and we don't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars to do it. If they put in, if, if Highbury can go, puts in their safety policy that the employees must, that the employees must use one of those two routes and stop crossing the road, that to me is the safest route. First offense, you get a reprimand. Second offense, you get suspended. Third offense, you're out the door. You're looking, but that's what I'm told in our business, in order to make our employees safe, is that you reprimand, you suspend and you fire them. But why can't they, why can't they go up and across? You've taken me on tours through there. It's a pretty wide walkway up there. I threw you, Madam Mayor, but I just think that there's got to be a better way to do this rather than changing this. And the other point to this is, we have a desire point at the Roma Club going to the LCBO that is more dangerous or, than this is, because it's also at a, at a driveway and more people, I've seen, I don't know how many people, almost hit there, cars stopping, locking it up. What are we going to do in that case? Are we going to put another one there as well? That's also a desire point that we need to address, if you want to call it a desire point, but I think there's safer ways than changing the road.
Would you like Mr. Kruger to answer the question?
Sure.
Mr. Kruger, if you don't mind coming up, name an address, please.
Just a point of... Just pursuant to the procedural bylaw, you'll just need a motion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for that. Move by, Counsel Dunn, sorry about that. Second in by Paul Teason, all, I mean, Counsel Teason, all in favor? Carried. Go ahead.
Yeah, so my name's John Kruger. Uh, the address is 148 Erie Street South. To answer, thank you, Madam Mayor, for, to answer Mr. Teason's question, um, the people that are crossing the street aren't only employees, but they're also members of the public, um, and they're off-duty, um, so not under the auspices of, of our control. So, um, we do have adults working there and, uh, and we have, the town has created a crossing there that is a legal crossing to use. So the, uh, there's, the safety policy doesn't really apply at this point.
Counsel Teason.
I would counter you, to you that it does. That crossing only came in, it didn't come in that many years ago, the original cross. There, there used to never be a crossing there, pedestrian crossing. It was just always used because people came down the steps, went across and went up. For years and years, we didn't have a crossing there. Then we tried to make it safer, we put a crossing in. I still say the safest way is up, across and down. And yes, you, okay, you say there are people, they're the public. You, they just finished work at Highbury and they're crossing the street? Because general members of public probably aren't. They probably are employees that are off-duty. And if they're off-duty, if, if on-duty, they don't cross the road? My guess is eventually you can teach them that off-duty, they won't cross either.
Would you like to speak again?
Yeah, the only thing I would say is, I mean, I've worked in that facility for almost eighteen years and the crossing went in, I believe, in around, about 2014. Um, in the first, uh, thirteen years or fourteen years, uh, there was one pedestrian hit. It was not at that crosswalk, it was further, closer to Oak Street. Uh, since then, we've had two pedestrians hit and, and, uh, my office is right on top of, basically right on top of that crosswalk. There, there are tires screeching and, uh, near misses almost on a weekly basis. I mean, I, I would agree that, that we shouldn't have to teach adults how to cross the street. However, um, what we've got now is worse than what we had, uh, before that.
Sorry to belabor this, but, so what you're saying is that you can't put it in your safety policies for them not to cross the street? You, you can't tell your employees to go up the stairs, across and then back down? Is that correct?
I, I'm not able to comment on that.
That's, it speaks volume.
No, we do not have a motion yet. Counsel Wilkinson.
Uh, Mr. Teason, I don't know if you saw our last meeting when we talked about this, the one that propelled it to this, but that's the same argument I made as you. I found it completely ridiculous and yes, I wanted him to go to the corner too. I didn't know the up and over existed. If I would have known the up and over existed at that point, I thought that's how you guys moved product across.
That too.
I would have really wanted it then, you know? That same thing at my work, that I said, if, if I go across over Talbot Street there, you know, my boss is going to think I'm an idiot, first of all, you know, and he's going to correct me, you know? And if I continue to do it, eventually I will be, um, reprimanded and, I, I agree. I think, I think you have to do your due diligence. I think Highbury has to do their due diligence here. And if you have a way to do it safely, especially if you can go up and over safely, I think it's up to you fellas to explore that. I'd like you to come back, answer that question Mr. Teason just asked you, see if you can do it. I think it's on you, first of all, before we go spend a hundred thousand dollars. It's my thoughts.
Counsel Hammond.
Thank you. Along with what Counsel Wilkinson shared, we, yeah, Paul, we've had this discussion. And it's unfortunate that we have to think for those that, uh, don't think for themselves. But, you know... But, you know, the Heinz workers and the Highbury workers have crossed that road in droves for years. All of those that used to cross when the whistle blew at lunchtime, to on the west side, to run to the parking lot, and they would dodge traffic and run through, not even the crossing we're talking about. I'm talking about within 40 feet of the intersection of Oak Street. That's, and that's what's gone on for years. So if you believe that we need to do something to protect those people because they can't protect themselves, then I think that for me, option three is the way to go. I would rather much see, forget about the bike lanes, and cut this down from, from four lanes to three, because I think the public will go crazy if we cut this back to two lanes. I think they're going to be in outcry anyway, because along with what you're saying, and John, I will tell you, and I think the same thing. The problem is, to go up and go across a bridge and come down, it's steps. And that's what it all amounts to. They don't want to take the steps. What I've been told is, when workers are on the east side, and if their shift is coming close to an end, if there's not enough work for them, they'll send them over to the west side, you know, to finish out the rest of their day. So here's a case where somebody, because they, they don't have a lot to do, or being moved to another, another location, still don't want to walk down, walk down to the corner in the intersection to cross the road, even though you're paying them by the hour. But having said all of that, my thoughts would be to stick with number three, because I think cutting down to three lanes is certainly better than cutting down to two.
I do, the CAO would like to comment, if that's okay.
Whether, whether we think Highbury could take steps to minimize the number of people who are crossing or not, isn't going to make a difference when it comes time to some liability. Because unfortunately, the question will be asked, well, that's fine that Highbury Handco did that, but what did the municipality do, knowing that there was a dangerous situation there? And unfortunately, and even because we've been fighting to try and get some clarity on our insurance, we still have not been able to get the government to take the steps that we've requested, that takes us away from the deep pockets argument. So if we are one person, found to be 1% liable, we often end up paying the whole amount. And so I know that you get sometimes tired of hearing the liability, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that the reasonable person would be asked, you know, it would be to the standard of the reasonable person, what the reasonable person expect of the municipality of Leamington? Well, to do something. And we can't leave it the way that it is, and our insurance will be affected, again, if all we do is look to the manufacturer to take those steps, unfortunately.
I'll have Mr. Kruger next. Mr. Toffelmeier, if you don't mind.
The only other thing I was going to add is, the Highbury's official position is that we don't, it doesn't matter, we're not advocating for a crossover. In fact, a suggestion potentially came to remove the lines, remove the dips in the curb, and eliminate that, and to put some signage up to that effect. We don't, we don't have an official position on spending $100,000 on anything, you know, where we just want it to be safer than it is. And what I can say is that what we have now is worse than what we had prior to the signs going up. So if it's simply removing the signs, removing the paint, I think we would be fine with that as well.
Sorry. Sorry, what did I do? Mr. Toffelmeier.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to add one point to what Mr. Neufeld said, because I think it adds to the sort of history of this location. But the park, why, why are there parking bays on either side of this crossing if people aren't expected to cross the street? You know, I think it's a natural occurrence that people come and pick, pick employees up, kiss and ride type thing in both directions, and whether you're on, if you're on one side or the other, people are crossing the street. So I think that's another element that would play into any arguments about it. But fundamentally, it's a public right of way, and it's municipal's responsibility to deal with it one way or another.
Councilor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. We've been over this, Tim said it back in June and everything else. If I may, with your rest, I would like to move that we accept option three and get this thing moving along somewhere. That's the alternate, PXO, alternate to three lane cross section without bike lanes.
Seconded by Councilor Hammond. And all in favor of that? And opposed? That's carried. Mr. Sharon, you have a question? Comment?
Yes, forgive me, your worship, but just to the matter of the right turn only, would council be satisfied if administration, you know, had some further discussions with the consultant and made that determination with regards to the outside lane on Erie Street South, making that a right turn only onto Oak, essentially avoiding the concern over the jackrabbit start, I believe is what deputy, the deputy mayor referred to it as? Council, that would be acceptable? We will make that determination as the most appropriate.
Oh, worthy mayor, as long as the clock doesn't start ticking again, either that we got to pay for this, little bit of free advice.
That's okay. We've discussed it, and we have enough, and we'll make a decision as administration. I mean, personally, I'm likely leaning to the right turn only onto Oak, but again, I want to consult. Yes, yeah. And that's similar to the conversation we had. I just want, I didn't want council to be surprised if they see that outside lane on Erie South become a right turn only.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough.
Looks like you've got consensus here.
Okay.
Thank you. We have 11.5, which is the telecommunications broadcasting tower letter of concurrence.
I will be quick. I appreciate being able to bring these forward. People are waiting for approvals. So administration has received a request from Rogers Communications for staff to issue a written letter of concurrence confirming that they have met the consultation requirements under Industry Canada's Radio Communications and Broadcasting Attendance Systems Protocol. So they are looking, Rogers is looking to install a 40-meter tower at the farm at 403 Seacliff West. Again, it will be a 40-meter tower, a monopole type tower. There's a small illustration that shows you what that means. This installation is going to include concrete pad, equipment cabinet, and fencing around that site. The site's about halfway up the farm, just behind the greenhouses. You can see that on the map. They have, Rogers has provided us with the required information package, and they have indicated that, in that package, they've indicated that they're bringing this forward because this is an underserviced area. Again, we, the placement and constructions of towers are regulated by Industry Canada, so therefore provincial legislation doesn't apply. So most importantly to us, building code and the Planning Act aren't applicable in this case. But they are required to consult with us, and this is part of that process. So this report serves to confirm that Rogers has provided the municipality with copies of the correspondence that's been provided to property owners within 120 meters of the base of the tower. They also have published it in the paper, and they requested that any comments be received prior to November 24th. They've confirmed that they received no comments. So administration is in the position to state that the proposed tower location is suitable and recommends that administration be directed to issue the requested letter of concurrence stating that Rogers Communications, Inc. has met the consultation requirements of Industry Canada's protocol for the 40-meter tower on the lands known as 403 Seacliff Drive West.
Thank you. Moved by Count, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor? Seconded by Councilor Wilkinson. All in favor? And that's carried. Great, thank you. And we're moving right along to the conditional building permit? No, not yet.
H removal for 208 Erie Street.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was the, I thought it was, I just saw the holding symbol and thought it was Arterial Road. So it is the removal of the holding symbol at 208 Erie Street North, and that is, again, Danielle, thank you.
Yep. So we have received a request to remove the holding symbol. This is for property located at 208 Erie Street North, and it is to allow for the development of a transportation depot, including a taxi service establishment and dispatch office. So this is a property just north of Wilkinson Drive on the east side of Erie Street North. It's in the highway commercial designation. It is also zoned highway commercial in the holding. So the use as a taxi establishment is permitted in this location. They are looking to remove the holding symbol to allow for the development of the required parking area. We have received a site plan application 2518 to allow for the construction of a hard surface parking area. That is going to include 37 standard, two barrier free parking spaces, as well as seven bus parking spaces. All of those will be located behind the existing dwelling. They're also including a concrete sidewalk in order to get to those parking spots. The existing dwelling will remain, as it's already been converted to a dispatch office. Together with the site plan, the owner has submitted site servicing drawings as well as stormwater management plans for this property, and administration is now satisfied that the appropriate servicing is available to allow for this development to proceed. The applicant has been provided with the standard site plan agreement for signature, and that agreement includes the requirement for the submission of the standard securities as well as Parkland payments. Once we have the approved site plan signed and the H has been removed, the applicant will be in a position to apply for the necessary building permits for the installation of those services and begin construction of that parking area. Again, the provisions of parking spaces approved within a site plan agreement are required under bylaw 6318 for the municipality to issue a license for taxis at this location. The recommendation to council this evening is that the zoning bylaw amendment 185 to remove the holding symbol from the property at 208 Erie Street North be approved, and that bylaw 7818 be forwarded to council.
Moved by.
Move, your worship, and thankful that maybe we reduce some of these bylaw infractions. I move it.
Moved by Councilor Jacob, seconded by Councilor Teason. All in favor?
No questions.
Did you have questions?
Thank you, worthy mayor. I know we're removing an H symbol too, but does this need any public consultation? The people know what's going in there and stuff? Just kind of making it kind of obvious, but is, because I know for the betterment to help the neighbors surrounding, to let them know what's going on, even though probably we don't have to.
So similar to the first report that was heard this evening, there is a notice requirement to remove the H that was put in the paper this, last week, sorry. So it was in the paper. It's not provided to all of the neighbors immediately abutting, and again, through the site plan, it's not a public process. Because this is an area that is zoned commercially, but there are existing residential uses in that area, there's quite a bit of mix of use in there, we have taken buffering into consideration on this site.
Well, it is certainly an improvement for what the condition of that yard was. So, anyway, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Danielle. And then we're moving on to the conditional building permit agreement for 408 to 410 Mercy Road. Please, Paul.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The owner of 408 to 410 Mercy Road 10 has previously provided a site plan, and the municipality has drafted a site plan agreement in respect to the subject property. The execution of the site plan agreement, which generally occurs prior to the issuance of the building permit, is pending final approvals of the site plan. Section 8.3 of the Building Code Act, Ontario, grants authority to the chief building official to issue a conditional building permit when the CBO is satisfied that unreasonable delays would occur if he did not issue the conditional building permit. Chief building official was satisfied that the impending winter weather conditions were such that any delay in erecting the posts would create an unreasonable delay in the entire development. As part of the requirements to obtain a conditional building permit, the chief building official can require the owner or applicant for the building permit to enter into an agreement with the municipality. The conditional agreement, the conditional building permit agreement, which council is approving tonight, requires the owner to, one, assume all risk in commencing the construction, two, obtain all the necessary approvals, and those would be the outstanding approvals that, that we still have yet to get to. File plans and specifications is required. At the applicant's own expense, remove the building and restore the site if the approvals are not obtained, and comply with such other conditions as the chief building official considers necessary. In this particular instance, the owner-applicant has agreed to execute the conditional building permit agreement and provide a security of $200,000. I will say, Madam Mayor, that prior to the issuance of this conditional permit, we did receive clearance from Mercker. While they haven't finished their full review, they did agree to allow us to issue this partial permit. There is no financial impact of this decision to the municipality. So staff are recommending that council authorize the execution of a conditional building permit agreement between 108, 41, 862 Canada, Inc., and the municipality with respect to the erection of greenhouse posts at 408 Mercy Road 10, Leamington, subject to the owner obtaining the final site plan approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Comments or questions? Motion? Moved by Councilor Jacob, seconded by Councilor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. We're moving on to the 2019 calendar of council meetings. Ms. Percy?
Leamington council meetings are currently held on the second and fourth Monday of each month, unless it's a holiday, and then it's held on the following day, which is not a public or civic holiday. In order to provide additional time for council to review, research, and seek feedback on council agenda items, council members had requested an adjustment to the 2019 council calendar, changing the meetings to the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. This not only allows additional time for council to review the agenda matters, but it also allows the public additional time before the meeting to review the items and consider registering as delegate. Changing the meeting day from Monday to Tuesday does not affect any other municipal business. The committee of adjustment meetings are typically held on Tuesdays, but will be rescheduled to Wednesdays. Administration has also confirmed with CFTV that the change would not affect their ability to provide the recording service. If approved, the schedule will be posted on the website for public information. Administration will advertise the change in the local paper and provide a copy of the calendar to CFTV. There's no financial impact to this change. Recommendations are, administration be directed to bring forward a bylaw to amend council procedure bylaw 28913 as amended to reflect the change of council meeting days, which are held, to be held on the second and fourth Tuesday in each month, and the attached schedule of council meetings for 2019 be approved as presented.
Council Wilkinson.
Thank you, worthy mayor. I appreciate us moving this up to Tuesday. It really gives us extra day to prepare, which is needed. I just hope at some point, though, we think about going back, we have a discussion about going back to regular meetings, whether it be three a month or every week, whatever, to avoid the big agendas we've been running into. I don't think we're doing our municipality a great service by having to take so much in at meetings. So anyway, for now, all in favor of it, but I hope we have that discussion here in the near future.
I agree with you too. Like, tonight, this is, especially on nights when there's something that involves a fair bit of dialogue, this is difficult. And staff's been here all day, you've been at work all day. It's a long time to make decisions that impact many, so I agree with you. Perhaps we can look at it after, after March, at least to consider. So what are council's wishes? Moved by Councilor Hammond, seconded by Councilor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thanks. And that is just exactly my point. So now we're discussing the appointment of the alternate council member to county council.
Given the time tonight, I'd be happy to bring that back to the next meeting.
And then we can move on to council member appointments to boards and committees.
It's necessary for council to make appointments to certain boards and committees each term. The report includes the different committees and also the recommendation for appointment. I'd be happy to go through each one, unless council would just prefer to refer to the recommendations throughout the report. I would draw your attention, however, to the end of the report. That... end of the report that talks about the volunteer recognition awards committee. This event was held annually historically, hosted by the deputy mayor. The ceremony was not held in the past few years as there has been a lack of nominations received. Administration will bring forward a separate report for council consideration with regard to this annual event and provide recommendations on new ways of recognizing volunteers. And also, there's a discontinuation of the Leamington Library Building Steering Committee, Economic Development Advisory Committee and the Skateboard Park Committee. And that the municipality has advertised for the layperson appointments to committees and a report will come back in January with respect to those. So the recommendation is that council approve the recommendations set out in the report.
Comments or questions? Moved by councillor Abiki, seconded by councillor Thiessen. All in favor? And that's carried. So matters for approval?
Your worship, the minutes of the police services board should actually be under matters for approval. If you could consider those now?
So police services board under matters for approval, moved by councillor Jacobs, seconded by councillor Dunn. All in favor? Carried. I will leave the other matters for consideration for Ms. Percy?
Yes, your worship, I would like to add an item there. Council is required, according to their procedural bylaw, to hold their meetings at 111 Erie Street unless there's a resolution by council. So this is really a housekeeping matter. The motion would be in accordance with section 4.2 of the procedural bylaw. Council hereby authorize itself to hold a special meeting of council on January 8th and January 9th, 2019, in Chatham, Ontario. The purpose of the special meeting is for strategic planning.
Moved by councillor Wilkinson, seconded by councillor Hammond. All in favor? And that's carried. Report on closed session.
Your worship, I'd be happy to add that to the next agenda as well to report out.
Okay, that's fine. And then consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 61-18 being a bylaw to provide for the new access culvert over the Jurassic Drain for 306 County Road 18, municipality of Leamington. That's third and final reading. Bylaw 75-18, a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaw 890-9, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA 183, 129 Mercy Road 8. Bylaw 77-18 being a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaw 890-9 pertaining to the subject land ZBA 180, 156 Talbot Street West. Bylaw 78-18 being a bylaw to amend the comprehensive zoning bylaw 890-9 pertaining to the subject lands ZBA 185, 208 Erie Street North. Bylaw 80-18 being a bylaw to amend, bylaw 289-13 as amended, being a bylaw to provide procedural rules for the conduct of meetings of the municipal council and its committees. Bylaw 81-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council from its meeting held December 17th, 2018. And from the addendum, bylaw 82-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council from its special meeting held December 3rd, 2018. Bylaw 83-18 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council from its special meeting held December 11th, 2018.
Moved by councillor, ah, sorry, deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Dunn. All in favor? And that's carried. There are no notices of motion, anything under open session?
Not tonight.
Statement of members, non-debatable? You've got something?
I would just like to say this is our last meeting before Christmas and I'd like to wish everyone, administration, my fellow councillors and everyone, very, very Merry Christmas and the best for the New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Anyone else? Deputy mayor?
Worthy mayor, I guess we should go through the gauntlet. Merry Christmas and from my family to yours, happy holidays, seasons greetings, valise navida. Anyway, all the best and looking forward to the New Year and the new challenge. Thank you.
Anyone else? Merry Christmas. And with that, did we have a motion to adjourn? Merry Christmas to everyone. Motion to adjourn, deputy mayor, seconded by?
Paul wants it.
Paul Thiessen. All in favor? Carried and good night.